Councilmember Badencourt?
Here.
Councilmember Loa?
Here.
Councilmember Bishop?
Here.
And I believe Councilmember Cariel is running a little late. And Mayor Hoffbauer.
Okay, here, we have a quorum. Before we move on any further, I need to move item 4.1 forward. In order to in order to, in order to move forward. This is gonna do a report on this item. Mr. Porter, is that gonna be you?
I would be pleased to do so. So the item before you is something that you directed come before you. This, currently you have Councilmember Bishop available online. The city has long time been allowing the public to participate electronically. What this particular ordinance or resolution would allow would be for the next thirty day period that members of the city council and would also have the ability to participate remotely. And then this also authorizes this to occur for other legislative bodies, for example, planning commission or whatever, if those legislative bodies have properly agendized the matter and it's clear on the agenda that that those planning commission members or whoever would also be able to participate. I should say that it was properly noticed, not that the planning commissioners would be able to participate, but it's properly noticed period.
Okay, so with that, I need a motion to adopt resolution number CC 2002-078.
Before we take the motion, is there any public comment on this?
Okay, City Clerk, do you have any public comment on item 4.1?
Um, no, sir.
IT, let the record show Mr. Cariel is present.
We have one person with their hand raised.
Okay, item 4.1, who's it, caller please?
Dave Bowman, feel free to unmute yourself.
Mr. Bowman? Mr. Bowman? Mr. Bowman? IT, is there any technical reason why he wouldn't be on?
I'm not sure, um, may I take a look?
Last call, Dave Bowman.
Perhaps you could brief Mr. Cariel as to what we're
What's that?
Perhaps we could, uh, brief Mr. Cariel on what we're entertaining right now?
Oh, yeah, we're on item 4.1. Okay, so, uh, seeing none, we're gonna go ahead and move on. Do I have a motion on, or any particular discussion on item number 4.1? Do you have a motion by Mr. Loa? Do we have a second on item 4.1?
Second.
Second by Mrs. Badencourt? City Clerk, roll call please.
Councilmember Badencourt?
Yes.
Councilmember Cariel?
Yes.
Councilmember Bishop?
Yes.
Mayor Protem Loa?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer.
Yes, item carries. All right, so now we will back up. And on public comments, do you have any public comments on the closed session items? Nick Tatt?
Yes. Fl- Flanagan?
Which item is this?
5.6.
5.6, okay.
We, um, from Leona Valley have just wanted to let you know that we've had four fires in the last two weeks. There's an ongoing fire right now, which is why we still strongly oppose Ritter Ranch. Thank you.
Thank you.
Carl Piercy?
That's three minutes. Good afternoon, I spoke a couple of weeks ago regarding the, uh, infrastructure that I think is lacking for the Ritter project. I brought this up thirty years ago. The 14 freeway, I feel it needs to be improved before you add density and more housing. The citizens of this town, I'm sure, don't need more traffic on that road. I, and I pondering your position, I have to wonder if you're treating Palmdale as a business and trying to improve it? Or if you're voting with the ear of your voters? They, uh, they, they struggle. A little bit of a private personal item, my wife worked for psychiatry, she's retired now. She reported to me, a lot of their clientele is because people moved up here and they find they have to fight that freeway every day. And after two or three years, it just takes a toll. And once again, adding several more miles of traffic that this project would entail, I think is a mistake. I won't get into water and earthquake and all the other things, just, just the traffic and the supporting of the traffic. Thank you.
Thank you, sir.
Peggy Fuller?
Peggy Fuller. Hi Peggy.
Hi. I also want to just state that we're still opposed to the Ritter Ranch project and elaborate a little bit on what Michelle said about the fire. We have a fire in Bowkey Canyon right now, we were expecting a lot more people here today to comment about Ritter Ranch, but people are afraid to leave their houses because that's the fear that you always have to deal with when you live out there. It's not just the fire itself, it's if they decide to start evacuating Leona Valley while we're in town, we may not be able to get back home. So people tend to stick at home whenever there's a fire. And the other thing about rural living is that you have to be prepared to evacuate all your animals. And that takes a lot of time. You know, if you've got three or four horses that have to be loaded into trailers or other large animals, even the small animals take time to round up. So people are very cautious about fires. The, the main point I wanted to talk about tonight was, um, the Native American artifacts and culture that are located on the Ritter Ranch property. There is, by allowing development there, you're going to wipe out centuries, thousands of years of Native American culture. The, the archaeologists that have looked at only a very tiny, small bit of Ritter Ranch have said that there are probably millions more artifacts on that property. And to allow bulldozers to come in there and destroy it is a real crime. Thank you.
Mario presents?
Same item?
Same item. I wasn't gonna speak on it, but they kind of inspired me. Um, I live in Mazanita Heights, I live right around the corner from Anna Verde. And I see the line of cars every morning, struggling to get out of the valley so they can commute to wherever they need to be. Ritter Ranch development's only going to make that worse. Um, those people who bought homes in Anna Verde were promised a fire station, a shopping center back there, neither of which have been materialized. And we're proposing more homes, more development, more people. So who's going to serve those people? The already strained fire stations that we have here in Palmdale in the main city? If you can't even afford to build another fire station over there to protect the homes in Anna Verde while they struggle with two fires in that area? How can you, in all good conscience, consider putting more people there? You are just putting those people in danger willingly. Have you considered that? Thank you.
Thank you.
Alicia Robertson, 5.6?
Some notes in case I forget because I'm not a really big speaker. Um, hi, I'm Alicia Robertson. I have lived in the area for eighteen years, I first lived in Green Valley. I ended up being the president of the town council there. And I fought, helped fight the power lines going through the town. And one of the things that we did talk about was the fact that once they extended all those power lines, Green Valley was landlocked. If, if there's gonna be a fire, the, the firemen can only do air. They cannot go underneath the power lines, you will not have any ground service there. For that reason, I do believe we do need another fire department. Uh, they gave Green Valley some money to add on to their community center and have an extra evacuation center right under the oak trees, I mean, that's not gonna save anybody there. It's just, it's just a death trap, so, um, that's one of the reasons I'm up here. I also, um, own an Airbnb in Green Valley. And one of the reasons why people come there is because it's quiet. There's no pollution and they don't have to deal with the traffic. For LA, I mean, this is something for them, mine's very successful and everybody loves it and it's just the atmosphere. And to add traffic on to that and the pollution, it's, I mean, I believe this area needs to be saved. And the development is not gonna help that. The traffic from eighteen years ago to now is crazy. It's just, I've watched the best men of, of our wedding die there. Um, one of the women on town council, her daughter and them were in, in a car accident, head on. Somebody running around the corner, blind spot. Her four-year-old daughter, I'm sorry, I'm nervous, her four-year-old daughter had a hail open on her with nails in her head for two years. If you see that, you understand why we don't want any more traffic. It's just horrible. And I'm sure I have one more reason here, but I can't remember. Oh, and the water, you know, Green Valley has no water, Green Valley's been on restrictions for three years and now you just can't do anything there. And we're dealing with the water and now Leona Valley's dealing with the water, Santa Clarita, California. I think it's wrong to build when we don't have any water and we don't have the fire department to help save our homes. That's it, thank you.
Mario presents 5.8.
Quien es John Jones? Yo, y por que lo quieren instalar a la posición de abogado de la ciudad? Han puesto aviso por la posición de abogado en los sociales? Por la página de la ciudad? Veo información de COVID, esta realización de los mascotas, Juneteenth, Patty LaBelle, pero no veo ordenanza 1577 y ningún aviso que están buscando gente calificada para la ciudad.
Mario, can you, we'll give you the extra time if you want to translate that? So those of us whose Spanish is marginal and only getting about every fifth word can understand it.
Can I use my, uh, second round and do it completely in English?
Oh, okay, yeah, that's fine too, all right.
¿Sabe la comunidad que Shankman y Hughes arreglado de Kevin I. Shankman, Mary R. Hughes y John L. Jones con los abogados de RX Paris sirvieron demandante y respondientes en un caso contra la ciudad de Palmdale? En ese caso que necesita su refrescante, cómo llegamos, yo cómo llegamos a una ciudad de distritos en vez de alta cuenta como Lancaster, aquí tengo el caso. También tengo otro caso donde Rex, Jones, Shankman y Hughes demandaron a la ciudad de Santa Monica. Deberás estar haciendo tu trabajo en reempezar Christopher Beck o solamente están haciendo lo que otra persona te dice que hagas. Estoy seguro que reconocen al señor Shankman llamando a la ciudad cuando estábamos discutiendo los distritos. Pero es interesante que la gente tan conectada a Lancaster y Rex apoyan tanto a John Jones para abogado mientras. No digas hemos buscado porque te pregunto dónde. Obviamente están buscando los lugares equivocados y escoges una persona que ha demandado tu ciudad. Cambiando un título, no cambia quién es, quién eliges a, a la posición y quién están escogiendo, no debe de ser un, una persona que ya ha trabajado contra tu ci- tu ciudad una vez. Qué grupo te dijo que era una buena selección? Todos quieren saber. Somos tu aliado más poderoso y activado, pero entiende que tu comunidad no se van a hacer mudos en la noche si vendes la ciudad. Tenemos la capacidad a rumbrar los empleados con avisos informados al público de la venta del Palmdale a Lancaster antes de subir el sol. La parte de tres, tres de la construcción de California dice que deben ser instruidos por la comunidad. Estas son tus instrucciones. No instales John Jones a ningún posición en la ciudad porque la compensación será bien visible. Si lo apuntas a la posición de los abogados, todos sabrán que están vendiendo a Palmdale parte de la pa- parte de la ciudad de Lancaster.
Okay, Mario, um, can we wrap that and then do the English side of it?
Sure.
Thanks.
Sure.
Normally we have
Yeah.
But obviously, yeah.
I wasn't paying attention, but did I, can I reclaim the time when we were interrupted the first time?
Yeah, yeah, no, I, so I gave you a few extra seconds on that, so, go ahead.
Si Jones beneficiará a la comunidad tanto lo hubieran instalado y en la ciudad de Lancaster, la comunidad de Palmdale encontró su voz y no se ríjeron en Lancaster por las oficinas de la-
Thank you, okay, in English?
Yes. Can I go get it from my chair? Who is John Jones and why is the council so eager to install him as city attorney? Have I seen any advertisement in the position of city attorney on social media or the city's website? I see COVID updates, I see low-cost Skopay and neuter clinics, Juneteenth, Patty LaBelle, but no ordinance 1577 and no announcement that you're seeking qualified employees. Does the community know that Shankman Hughes, consisting of Kevin Shankman, Mary Hughes and John Jones, along with the RX Paris Law Firm, among others, served as plaintiffs and respondents to sue the city of Palmdale? In case you need to refresh your course on how we arrived at a districted city instead of an at-large election like Lancaster, I have the case right here for you. I also have the case where Rex, Jones, Shankman and Hughes sued Santa Monica. Are you really doing your due diligence in researching a replacement for Christopher Beck? Or are you doing what someone else is telling you to do? I'm sure we all remember Mr. Shankman calling in during districting conversations, but it's interesting that people so connected to Lancaster and Rex are so supportive of John Jones as interim city attorney. Don't say, oh, we've looked, because I'll ask you where. Obviously, you're looking in the wrong places because you're picking from people who sued your city. Changing a title doesn't change a position and who you're putting in that position does not need to be a litigator who's worked against your community once before. Which group whispered into your ear to install John Jones and that he'd be a good choice? We'd all like to know. We're your greatest ally and a powerful resource, but understand that your community will not silently go into that good night if you sell us out. There is capacity to overwhelm the city employees with more signs than they can handle and residents will be notified that you're selling us out faster than you can wake up tomorrow. Section three of the California Constitution says that you're supposed to be instructed by your constituents. These are your instructions. Do not install John Jones to any city position because the quid pro quo will be very visible. If you do, everyone will know that you're selling out Palmdale for Lancaster's leftovers. If Jones was such a benefit to the community, he would have already been installed in the city of Lancaster. The community of Palmdale has found its voice and it doesn't come from Lancaster or RX Parasite's office.
Thank you, sir. City Clerk?
Rich Cariel?
Good evening, Rich.
Good evening. Um, Mayor Hoffbauer, just wanna say it's nice to see you here in person, you're feeling significantly better. And Ms. Badencourt, it's a real pleasure to see you here in person. So, um, this morning I sent a letter to each and every one of you. I don't know how many of you have seen it, but I know that the people watching at home or that are gonna be reading transcripts are not aware, so I'd like to read it now. I write this morning on behalf of the Palmdale Freedom Coalition to inform you of our strong opposition to the potential hiring of John L. Jones as, as Palmdale's next city attorney. It is our view that his ties with the city of Lancaster and the role he played in suing the city of Palmdale, which cost our city in excess of $4 million, make him an entirely unsuitable candidate for the position. Our recent communications urging you to involve the citizens of Palmdale and the Palmdale Freedom Coalition in searches and vetting of candidates for important city offices have been ignored. Instead, you make backroom decisions without consulting the very people who have a state constitutionally guaranteed right to instruct you as to how they wish to be represented. We find this wholly unacceptable. Therefore, we are instructing you this evening to find a more suitable candidate for the position of city attorney. Preferably one who doesn't have the history of doing financial harm to the city of Palmdale and doesn't represent yet another city of Lancaster tentacle reaching in to the governance of our city. We've talked about this before. You folks are our representatives. You are supposed to be listening to the citizens who are instructing you as how we want to be represented. On some of you, that seems to have been lost. I also forwarded you this morning a photograph. I don't know how many of you have seen it. It's a photograph of the check written by the city of Palmdale to the plaintiffs in that, that lawsuit for 4.6 million dollars. The, the, it was a Facebook post by Mr. Shankman, Kevin Shankman. The, the text at the bottom of that photograph said, "Picture me rolling." Forgive me, bitches. This is who John Jones is in league with. Is this the level of professional decorum that we wanna see in our city attorney? And why have you ignored when we've offered to help you do the vetting? We've offered to help you find suitable candidates? You know, there are citizens here who have plenty of expertise, plenty of intelligence. And as I pointed out in previous letters, that also takes some of the burden off of you as far as if somebody fails, it's not all your fault. We share the blame. But you've ignored our offers. I'd really like to know why that is. We're not going away, we're gonna keep doing oversight of this committee until it starts doing things the way the citizens, or at least those of us who are engaged citizens, wish for it to be done. And I don't mean the voiceless who should not have a voice. Thank you very much.
Thank you, Richard. City Clerk?
Can I say something or not?
Well.
I, I just wanted to say that we, we did approach the city attorney to try to get some of you into the process, but because it's a personnel matter, and correct me if I'm wrong, attorney, um, and it has to be done in closed session, we're not allowed to have public participants in closed session. But we, we did try to, to find a way to have that done.
We could set up a commission and just ignore their recommendations too.
Well, oh.
Anyways, that's a different topic for a different day. City Clerk?
Garlandia Davis, 5.8.
5.8? Good evening.
Good evening. It is good to see you, Mr. Badencourt, and I'm glad you're doing very well. Uh, my comment is brief. I'm not a, I'm not a fan of you all bringing in the attorney. And, uh, basically, I kinda look at the name too, Shankman. Um, to me, reminds me of a man who will shank you. And I don't think that that's what we want here. The, um, coalition, as we stated with 1577, there are things that we are passionate about. And this is one that we are passionate about. And we will not tolerate any more corruption. I'm just saying, we'd like to be able to work in a manner that really produces the type of, um, equity. And we see corruption, we're not going away. Thank you.
Thank you so much. City Clerk?
Carol Ross, 5.8.
Good evening. Hi. It is so good to see you. You too. So listen, um, I know that you guys are gonna be making some important decisions today. You have a great responsibility, not only on this point, but on everything you do. Everything you do carries such weight. Um, I know that we have told you that we have been praying for you. I told you I would continue to pray for you. After 1577 passed and the coalition has been praying for each of you personally, I hope you all got my email to let you know that I have been praying for each of you personally. And I wanted you to know that. And I feel like I have something that God wants to share with you, not only concerning this item, but all the other decisions you'll be making. Um, first of all, um, God wants you to know how much, I'm gonna cry, how much He deeply loves each and every one of you. You're all made in the image of God and you're special to Him. And He wants you to know how much He loves you. For I know the plans I have for you, says the Lord. They are plans for good and not for disaster, to give you a future and a hope, Jeremiah 29:11. Nothing will ever be able to separate us from the love of God that reveal, is revealed in Christ Jesus, our Lord. I urge you, trust in the Lord with all your heart. Do not depend on your own understanding. Seek His will in all you do and He will show you which path to take. Don't be impressed with your own wisdom, instead fear the Lord, Proverbs 3:5-7. Fear of the Lord is the foundation of wisdom, knowledge of the Holy One results in good judgment. Joyful is a person who finds wisdom, the one who gains understanding. For wisdom is more profitable than silver and her wages are better than gold, Proverbs 3:13 and 19. Isaiah 30:1-5, 7 and 15 says, "But what sorrow awaits my rebellious children," says the Lord. You make plans that are contrary to mine. You make alliances not directed by my spirit. Without consulting me, you have gone down to Egypt for help. You have put your trust in Pharaoh's protection, but by trusting Pharaoh, you will be humiliated and by depending on him, you will be disgraced. Egypt's promises are worthless. Only in returning to me and resting in me will you be saved. I just wanna pray for you all right now. Lord, we come to you in the name of Jesus. I pray and I lift up each and every one of these council members and the mayor right here. May you have the power, each one of you, to understand how wide, how long, how high, how deep His love is for you. May you experience the love of Christ, though it is too great to understand fully. I pray that God give you wisdom to see clearly and really understand who Christ is and all that He has done for each one of you. That your hearts be flooded with light so that you can see the future He has called you to share and that you begin to understand how great His power is to help those who believe in Him. Now all glory to God who is able, through His mighty power at work, within us, to accomplish infinitely more than we might ask or think. Amen and amen.
Thank you.
Abraham Sotsejo, 5.8.
Good evening, sir.
Hello, everybody. Um, I'm gonna echo some of the sentiments here today. Um, it is, it is our understanding that the person you're considering for interim, interim city attorney is Mr. John Jones. It is also understanding Mr. Jones was involved in the lawsuit brought against our city regarding voting, the voting districts in 2015. We believe giving his position within the lawsuit, that cost our city dearly. This continued alliance with Lancaster, or his continued alliance with Lancaster and past would preclude him from being even considered as an interim attorney. Um, there's, there's plenty of people out there and to bring in somebody that was part of suing Palmdale for $4 million and working with a group that not only sued us but mocked us and yet that's somebody that we wanna bring in to have the heart of Palmdale, it just doesn't make sense. You know, um, as far as, as far as, uh, I'm concerned, to me, in any type of business or anything of that nature, you would never bring in somebody to work for you to, um, that's, that's worked against you in the past. It just, it'll, it'll never work, you'll never have the heart that we need to truly represent Palmdale in the proper way. So today, we just come to you and just, you know, ask you, you know, as the voices of the people that you are here to represent. And we say to you that there's plenty of other candidates out there and we said, don't bring them in as an interim city manager. And I know it's a tough position for every single one of you guys, I thank you guys for what, what you do here, you know, representing the city, but you have a job to do and you have to take all those things into consideration. I think those are very important. Bringing people, you know, when you have a, a, a city and we're saying that Palmdale cares, right? But yet we bring people in that really didn't care about Palmdale. Um, it, it really goes against, against what, what we say we're doing here in Palmdale. So I ask you guys to really take that into consideration. Thank you.
That's all I have.
Thank you. IT?
We have a couple of hands raised. Elena Scopio, feel free to unmute yourself.
Which item number?
5.8.
5.8, go ahead, thank you.
Greetings, um, Mayor Hoffbauer and, um, city council. Um, I applaud the young lady who prayed for you because I have prayed for you. Not just that God will give you wisdom, but that God will give you a heart to be, um, to consider all of the residents of Palmdale and not just the select few or special interest. It has come to my attention that John L. Jones has, the second, has, um, been a part of a lawsuit that was, uh, propagated against the city of Palmdale. And I'm really wondering how he got the position as an interim city attorney when that actually took place. Um, being that Shankman is J.J. Murphy's attorney, being that, uh, the two of them have aligned themselves with Rex Paris and it's no secret that he has, actually Rex Paris has written checks for, um, our city council people. Um, it's no, uh, secret that Rex Paris doesn't live in Lancaster, but he wants to, um, he wants to control or, or, or serve as mayor. It's no secret that it's, it's a plan to put both of these cities together, um, Palmdale and Lancaster respectively, and then, you know, have that power and control. You know, um, it, I just think it's, um, a, a, a ploy to select a black person at this particular time to serve as city council, so you- So you won't appear to be racist because you are, all of you are. And you have proven yourself to be discriminatory because you took seventeen million dollars. You gave seven point four million of it to the Sheriff Department. It's like you guys like giving money away. You gave nothing to seniors. You gave nothing to the black community. The only blacks that profited from the measure A V money is B J T Smith. And Rhonda Perez told me that uh, Bishop Henry Hearns, who is the first black mayor of Lancaster. He was the one that came privately to her to get money as well. So I'm, I'm, I, 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 I just don't understand. I applied to sit on the measure A V commi- committee, oversight committee, and I'm qualified to do so. But as of yet, I see nobody, persons of color, meaning with the pigmentation that I have, sitting on city council or the measure A V um, oversight committee, and I think it's a shame. And now you want to put a black person in to do uh, bidding with Shankman and, and uh, uh,
Thank you.
Rex Paris.
Thank you, Mr. Shownfeld. IT?
Dave Bowman, feel free to unmute yourself.
Mr. Bowman?
Am I being heard now?
Yes, sir. We're on, which number are you on, sir?
Five eight, just like everybody else is.
Okay, go ahead.
You know, first off, I would like to go ahead and thank the Free Coalition for their terrific insight as far as the matter is concerned in relation to the appointment of new city attorney. You know, I feel sorry for Mr. Jones because you folks are going and you're using him. You're using him to try and go ahead and prove it and see to see that you're not racist, but yet, Jones' history speaks for itself. And what it is, he went ahead and he did to this city. Now, I'm not opposed to anybody, anybody in one way or the other. What I am opposed is to afford you city on the dais. Because it seems like continuously over and over and over and over again. All you do is you just hope that the people stupid enough to let you get away with what it is you're doing. Now, I keep telling each and every one of you that the game has changed here. Specifically because of people like the Palmdale Free Coalition, people like Elena Schofield. All these individuals who speak out against you, you might laugh at them. City Manager Perez, but you went ahead and you did the same thing to me too. When you went and you pulled me in there in front of all of the senior staff in the city and picked my brain about how to go about attacking the position of each and every one of these individuals. And I didn't even realize it until after I got back and I heard your presentation at the dais. I went ahead and heard it and I realized what that meeting was for. I was just glad that I was able to bring a colleague of mine into the conversation. And I'm grateful for their participation. And I hope that they keep on going and working towards eliminating each and every one of you. Because you're the reason that Palmdale was failing. You, all of you, are the reason. We go ahead, we have a city manager who doesn't even know one thing about the job. Okay, who was also part of the management over there in Lancaster as well too. And she's here. And now you go ahead and you have everybody else who was gone ahead and worked over in Lancaster here. There are others as well. And I'm guaranteeing each and every one of you individuals that what happens tonight is gonna be remembered all the way up to the elections. And you better go ahead and start doing what's right, or you can start packing your bags, getting ready to go home. Because that's the reality. Some of you should be at home, spending your last weeks, months, or years, or whatever it is, taking care of your grandkids and loving your family. Others need to go ahead and look forward to this status from a better future for the city of Palmdale. That's your responsibility. You know, so people disgust me. That's all.
Thank you, sir. That it? IT?
We have one more.
Okay.
Kevin Shankman, feel free to unmute yourself.
Mr. Shankman, I, uh, let me guess, what item number?
Yeah, uh, whichever one you, every one of your parade of piazzos has been, has been referring to here.
Five point, five point eight, go ahead, sir.
Yeah, so fir- first I want to, uh, you know, the purpose of me coming, I, I, I just wanted to congratulate uh, Councilmember Correo on uh, on his win on election night. Um, I think uh, Palmdale will, will be, um, you know, losing a, a great city council member, but will be gaining a great assembly member. So congratulations, uh, Councilmember Correo. Um, and then, you know, I, I, I tune in and, and, and the mayor has, has this parade of piazzos coming in to attack me. Uh, for what? You know, a- and, and you want to oppose John Jones? But you ain't got nothing about John Jones, so it's attack Kevin Shankman. And, you know, John Jones hasn't worked for us for six years. He has no ties to Lancaster. The only connection between John Jones and Rex Paris is they both happened to work on, on a lawsuit nine years ago. Every one of these people gets up and talks about the financial harm to the city from this lawsuit. You know who did the financial harm to the city? Steve Hoffbauer. Steve Hoffbauer decided that he was going to fight that lawsuit. No other city had, but Steve Hoffbauer needed to fight. So, you know, the city lost a total of about seven million dollars because Steve Hoffbauer had to fight. Okay, fine. But you know what? What it comes down to, I look at your agenda and you, I, I'm closed session. You got, I think, seven different litigation matters. Why? Because you're getting bad legal advice, because you've gotten bad legal advice for all those years. You got bad legal advice from Matt DeTese about the voting rights lawsuit that cost you seven million dollars. And you're still getting bad legal advice. So the question becomes, do you continue to hire losers who give you bad legal advice? Or maybe, maybe, just maybe, you hire a winner and then you'll get good legal advice. And the one thing you know about John Jones, because he won with me, is that he's a winner. I'm sorry for being so upset about this and being so animated, but when I am personally attacked and someone who is attacked for simply having worked with me, that is offensive and insulting. And Mayor Hoffbauer, you should be ashamed of yourself for dragging these people in here, not knowing a damn thing other than what you tell them to come in here and attack me. Yeah, get up and leave. That's what you do best. Thank you.
Well, other than being factually incorrect and not being able to count to five, thank you so much for your insight. Um, anybody else? No? I just find it very interesting. So, but he's your guy, so, okay. All right, so we're gonna go into a closed session and uh, if Mr. Porter, is there Mr. Jones here? So, Mr. Porter, could please uh, give us a report on what we're gonna be doing in closed session, sir?
So, uh, we'll be discussing the items.
Excuse me. How many of you guys did I troll in here tonight?
None.
None.
All right, so he was wrong on that too. Imagine that. Okay, go ahead, sir.
So, uh, we will be adjourning to closed session. We'll be discussing the various items that are listed on the agenda under, so it'll just be the sections, you know, five one through five nine.
Thank you, Mr. Porter. All right, everybody, thank you very much.
Okay, I think we got everybody here that's gonna be here. I apologize for running late. There were a number of items that were brought up in the public comment at 5 o'clock that caused some additional and considerable consultation with many attorneys. So I apologize, but you did it. You know, but thank you for the input. And I'm gonna explain that further in just a minute. Okay? Okay, so anyways, welcome everybody back. We gotta close out the closed session. City Attorney, can you please report out from the closed session, please? And we're back on the record.
All right, good evening. So with respect to the items on the closed session, there are two items to report out. The first is in item 5.5. Allen versus City of Palmdale, the city council authorized the filing of a cross complaint in that matter. In item 5.6, Conference of Legal Counsel Existing Litigation, Leona Valley Town Council versus City of Palmdale, the city council authorized the filing of a cross complaint in that matter as well. There was no reportable action taken on the other agenda items.
Okay, so we will adjourn the closed session meeting. And we will do a pledge of allegiance and a moment of silence. And out of our troops, I'd also like to make sure that we include in our thoughts tonight, the Almani officers and our CHP officer down in the San Fernando Valley that had a problem here. So, but they were killed and shot and that kind of stuff, okay? So however you choose to do that, we'll just do it quietly, okay? Can I? Who's the smallest one there? You get to come right up here. And can you help us with the pledge of allegiance, please? All right? And then when we're done, then just kinda watch me and I'll tell you when it's time to go.
Okay.
All right, what's your name again?
Riley. Riley Mellon.
Okay. All right, so Riley will lead us in the pledge of allegiance.
Put your right hand over your heart. Ready, begin.
I pledge allegiance to the flag of the United States of America and to the republic for which it stands, one nation, under God, indivisible, with liberty and justice for all.
Good job. Thank you very much. All right. Madam City Clerk, can I get a roll call, please?
If I can please have Commissioner Denny up to the dais, please.
You're in a seat. I'm sorry.
You're being kicked off as the City Attorney.
Yeah, again, sorry.
They have to go to kids. You gotta go to the kids' table now. Okay, they're here because we have some Housing Commission items as well. Okay, City Clerk, roll call, please.
Mayor Chair Hoffbauer.
Here.
Mayor Pro Tim, Vice Chair, Chair Pro Tim Loa.
Here.
Council members, directors, members, commissioners, Carillo.
Here.
Bishop, Benton Court.
Here.
Motion to excuse Councilmember Bishop.
Second.
Motion second, all in favor?
I'm sorry, I'm not finished with the roll calls.
Oh.
Sorry.
Can I hurry?
Father Sines.
Here.
And Denny.
Here.
Thank you.
Go ahead.
Okay.
Motion to excuse Mr. Bishop now.
Second.
Okay, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Okay. So I need a waiver of full reading of resolutions and ordinances?
So moved.
Second.
Of a motion by Mr. Loa and a second by somebody.
Mrs. Benton Court.
Benton Court, all in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries without objection. All right, so before we move any further, just wanna make sure that you guys all heard the city attorney's report out from the closed session and from the public comments prior to that. So based on the fact that there was no action taken on item 5.8 and 5.9, I, that makes 16.3 irrelevant and will be removed from the agenda if I get a second?
Second.
Okay, I have a motion and a second to remove item 16.3. All in favor?
Aye.
Anybody opposed? Motion carries. So take a look at the agenda, 5.8, 5.9, 16.3. We're done with it. And thank you for all of your input on that item. So at this point, we're gonna go into public comments.
No, don't we do presentations first?
Where'd that go? That's right. I need, I was requested that somewhere along the line in the way things happen, a presentation was missed. So I will make a motion that we add this item to the agenda, consider the fact that we've got roomful of people here that are here for this particular item. So I would like to add that motion to add this presentation by Ms. Benton Court to the agenda at this time.
And Mr. Mayor, if I may.
Yes, sir.
So to clarify for the record that this item came to our attention after the agenda was published. So that's the reason that we're adding this to the agenda. And this does need to occur this evening.
And it's a timely item.
And for that reason, we need to make this occur tonight.
Thank you, sir.
I'll second the motion.
I have a motion and a second. We need a four-fifths vote on this item. Roll call, please, by the, I think this, is this just the council voting on this item? Okay, council vote only, please, City Clerk.
Councilmember Benton Court?
Yes.
Councilmember Carillo?
Yes.
Council, Mayor Pro Tim Loa?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer.
Yes, very good. Ms. Benton Court would like to make a presentation with some members of the community tonight.
Okay, so this is long overdue. This is for a group of people who tremendously helped the Antelope Valley, both Palmdale and Lancaster. There's an old saying that it takes a village. And there's certainly things that the City of Palmdale loved to do, but the City of Palmdale cannot do everything and be everywhere. So we rely on our support groups to help us reach people that we would not normally reach. And so tonight, I want to recognize a group of people who during COVID went out, fed people, people, fed the homeless, did outreach, helped people get medical care, and helped people get housing. So first, I'd like to call up Ruth Sanchez. Come on up. And I'd like, Ruth, before I start calling people up, I want to, I want her to introduce all of you to what her groups do for our community, 'cause I don't think they get the recognition really that they deserve, 'cause they are literally out there in the desert, day and night, looking to help people. So I'm gonna give you the mic, and you can share.
Thank you, Councilmember Benton Court. Yeah, first of all, I do wanna thank everyone that volunteers with us. We have been out in the trenches, helping individuals, but not only out in the desert, we also help the community, the low-income, lower-income community here in Palmdale, Lancaster, the whole Antelope Valley. And actually, I'm very thankful, because my group actually travels the state of California. More recently, we were in Imperial County, 20 minutes away from the border, serving over 2,000 individuals that live out there, out in the outskirts, and those are individuals that nobody recognizes. But we were able to register individuals, and I'm very happy, because we also work with, you know, the border suppression, which is now, we register our unhoused individuals so that they are able to vote in the upcoming elections, and their voice can be heard.
Okay, so when I call your name, if you could please come up, first, I'm gonna call up Virginia Love. If you're here, come on up. I'll read the certificate, and it's pretty much the same for all of them. So this, these certificates say, "In recognition of your ongoing commitment and service to the unhoused during the pandemic, the City of Palmdale would like to thank you for making a difference in our community." So this is for the top 10 workers. There's a whole lot more. There's hundreds of them, actually. But we weren't able clearly to give out 100 certificates, and it would take us all night. So we picked the top 10, and we do love all of the rest, too, so I hope that they're not feeling, you know, any kind of way about that. So if I could have Ismael, don't leave. No, don't leave. We're gonna do pictures. Ismael Galvin. Next up will be Van Roberts.
Thank you for your service.
Thank you very much.
Next will be Ron Kagan. Maria Garcia. Anna Mass and Salinas.
She left?
Oh, okay, I'll go, I'll give it to you, Ruth, and you can make sure she gets it. David Morales. Felipe Garcia.
Left you?
Okay.
Who's gonna take your picture? He'll do a selfie.
Thank you, Vladimir.
And then, of course, they have the Dolores Huerta Foundation AV Chapter, and I'm gonna have Ruth accept that. Come on up. Who's gonna take your picture? Okay, so if everybody can kinda, I guess, which side? Squish down this way? Let's have everybody come down here. And really, you know, we appreciate the volunteer efforts of everybody in our community. This is just one group. We have lots of groups that go out and help people. So if you know of someone that needs to be recognized, please let us know. Is there anybody who would like to speak before, anybody want the mic? Ready? Don't be afraid. Okay, there you go. There you go.
First of all, I wanna take my award, and I wanna share with all you guys. And it's a reason why, I'm from Voices of Our Youth as well, and we're, we are out there in the trenches, but what I wanna say is that it's time that we all come together. This is all our problems. I don't have anything against the council, but it's not their problem, it's our problem. And those are our grandmothers, our kids, our neighbors out there. So, all these nonprofits in here, can we stop fighting each other and come together and help? A lot of hurt people.
Thank you so much. Okay, everybody huddle. Of course, Vladimir will do his own selfie. There you go. There you go. Who's the photographer? Was that you, Jason? Okay, we'll make sure you guys get these pictures, okay? Thank you, guys. Thank you so much.
So, if you can stay or not, it's a good time to, if you were planning on leaving, this is a, it's a good opportunity, good segue for that, if you were here just for that item. Okay. We're gonna move on to item 11 on public comments. Now, we've got a couple of public hearings, which are items number 13 and 14. There's a couple items under that. So those will have their own time, so that all that testimony is together if any issue comes up. Consent calendar, which is item 11, and non-agendized, and anything else that happens to be on the agenda, this is the opportunity to have that discussion. City Attorney, you wanna explain that, a bunch of language here, but...
So, in short, so we've got three minutes at most that will be authorized to each person, and this is to cover everything on the agenda. So you get to speak one and only one time, with the exception of the items that were noted. So if you're here to speak on a public hearing item, you might have the opportunity to speak twice. But speak one time and hold your peace.
So if you, no, sir. So if you, so I would also ask that when we call the item, City Clerk will cut off based on when the item is called, so we can try to keep the meeting moving along here now. So, we are now on public comments. IT, do you have anybody online at this time? Okay. Sky?
Good evening.
Hi, Sky, I'm on yours. You're on.
Can you guys hear me?
Yes.
Okay, good evening, my name is Sky Jung, and I wanted to invite all of you guys and gals to the Palmdale Pride Walk, happening June 26th at 9:00 a.m. We'll be meeting in front of the Palmdale Playhouse and walking about a mile, and at the end of the walk, we'll be ending at the Antelope Valley Art Gallery, right down the street from the Playhouse, with a food truck, and drink show, and plenty of great speakers. And I hope you all can make it. That's all.
Thank you for organizing that. IT, the other speaker? Mr. Bowman? Mr. Bowman?
Am I being heard?
Yes, sir.
You know, that's an interesting comment made by the City Attorney Pro Tim. And it seems like more and more, the City Council is trying to find more ways to keep the public from being able to participate in what's going on and being heard. A classic example of, so what Laura Benton Court went ahead and she had done as far as the Audit Committee meeting was done. The Speaker went ahead and asked if there were any questions, and Laura Benton Court went ahead and she cut off any input at all from the people who wanted to go ahead and know the process as far as the audit was concerned. Furthermore, there are contacts in the City Attorney's office who have gone ahead and reported that Ms. Benton Court is actually going ahead and exploring the possibility of being able to go ahead and stop public comments on the internet. Now, you know, this is just part of what it is, you guys go ahead and get up to. If I was to sit here and try and go through everything that you folks are going ahead and doing, I'd be here all night, but we're gonna get to those things sooner or later. Now, the first thing, the only thing I wanna go ahead and address in public comments is this thing with the $8 million bucks that's going to the county for law enforcement coverage. And you know, currently, the law enforcement agency has contracted to the county the amount of $38 million annually. In recent email that he sent to me, Opera stated that the crime rate in Palmdale is the lowest in the region. Now, documentation indicates that current local law enforcement is experiencing a 30% manpower shortage, forcing law enforcement employees to put in so many hours that overtime payments are now becoming a fiscal issue, and forcing some of these employees to sleep at the station to avoid quick turnarounds. They literally don't even get to sleep at their own homes because of the overtime. Now, per staff report, when this is tonight's meeting, the county's gone ahead and announced a 5.5% increase in law enforcement services totaling almost $2 million bucks. Okay? Now, they did this before they realized that the windfall from Measure AV revenues. Now, City Council insiders relate how the City Council, as well as the City Manager, were attempting to reduce law enforcement expenses by near 4% to compensate for the general fund shortcomings due to mismanagement of city tax revenues. Now, in addition to the already paid $38 million and the increase in law enforcement services, our current payment to the county is going to be almost $40 million. To this figure, they're adding an additional $8 million of Measure AV money that will be sent out of our city, contrary to what was to be the tax base we promised. Now, that goes ahead and makes the total law enforcement expenditure expenditures for the City of Palmdale almost $50 million, and we're getting the same level of coverage as we were before. And that is due to a disagreement between the Sheriff's Department and the Mass Transit Authority that is down in Los Angeles. They're going in saying that if they don't get a $67 million contract, those ain't covering all of it.
Thank you, sir.
Yeah, I bet.
Thank you. I think there's some disagreement on his math, to say the least. Okay, City Clerk, public comment?
Yes, Mayor. Let's start with Eugene Hernandez.
Gene, I didn't see you back there. I'm seeing a lot of you.
I know. I wonder, Mr. Mayor, that if only law enforcement's lives count, you know, I don't see a moment of silence for the 19 children who are killed in Uvalde?
I think we did that last week.
And the two teachers, and the 10 black shoppers in Buffalo who were killed by white racists, and the doctors who've been killed? And what about the survivors? Why isn't, why don't you have a moment of silence for those Americans who have suffered this? You know, not only law enforcement count, right?
You're right, Gene. You're right, and I tried to encompass that in it with everybody, but you're right.
You're cutting my time. The second thing is, the second thing is, I want transparency in the city government. You know, this Oversight Committee that decides where the funds go are full of racists. For them to deny funds to people because they're so-called illegal aliens or helping illegal aliens, those people have to be ousted from that Oversight Committee. They have no right to discriminate against Latino people. And I wanna see transparency of the members of the Board of the City Council who are receiving monies from organizations, too. I think that people like Ruth Sanchez and Felix Mendez and Oscar from SALVA are working day and night. I seen Ruth work at 10 o'clock at night. Yeah, I wish you guys would get off your duffs and see them working, because those people deserve fully amount, they want, they need triple the amount that you're not, you're not giving to them. These people who have worked through the pandemic, giving people immunization shots, food, when no other professionals were doing that, they deserve triple, and next year they should get triple the amount. SALVA and Dolores Huerta are contributing to the community far more than other organizations. So I'll speak more on this on 16.2, but get rid of this Oversight Committee and the racists that are on it, and get, and be transparent about the boards that you guys are on. So next, next meeting, have a moment of silence for the kids, the Chicanitos kids who died because the cowardly police were afraid to save them, where they bled on the floor, and the Uvalde police and the Texas Rangers were afraid of getting shot, and they let them die. That is a national tragedy and a shame.
Thank you. Thank you, Gene. You know what? He's right. I thought we had handled that at the last meeting. We didn't. I own that. We did do that at the last meeting. So I just had family go back there, matter of fact. City Clerk?
Ron Cassan?
Kagan?
Oh, yeah, that's Kagan. Sorry.
Take it. It's close enough.
Good evening, Mayor and City Council Members.
Good to see you.
I wanna encourage you folks to do more for our unhoused population. And I hear, you know, this is going on, that's going on, we've got housing going up, but I live in Rancho Vista, and I, we have our, we have like four homeless people living in a lot there. When we go out to Avenue G, which of course is where everybody got pushed out to, it's ridiculous. It is, it's sad. And the gentleman, when he said, "You folks should see what's going on," I would invite each of you to go out with us and see, because the problem that Lancaster has is coming to Palmdale. And I see it. I see it in my neighborhood, and I see it in the beautiful, when you turn off the freeway that, you know, it's all landscape. There's, well, of course, if I was homeless, I'd wanna live, you know, where there's nice landscape.
Yeah.
You know, so, so we're, we see it all over the place now. So we, we are doing whatever we can do. We don't get paid. When we feed, nobody, the ACLU doesn't give us money to feed. We, we do that out of our own pocket, and we expect our government to take care of those folks that are marginalized, that don't have the voice that I have, that we have. So you folks need to do more, and we need to hear what you're doing. When you do something, because I've gone and spoken, and they say, "Well, we've done this, we've done that, we've done this." Well, the public doesn't hear about it. If you do something, you need to let us know so we can celebrate what you're doing, and we will give you credit when you do good. But when you're doing what you're doing now, which is not doing anything...
That's, yeah. I would, I would invite, leave me your number, and I'll call you when I'm out there, because I go out and I, the particular tent you're talking about, I know which one it is, and I've been out there. So you got my email, shoot it over to me, and we'll take a walk, 'cause I've been there. And the problem with the freeways is a problem, because the state won't let us do it. Thanks. 'Cause we're neighbors. Okay, thanks, Ron. City Clerk?
Good evening, everybody. So, we'd like to know if you have somebody who speaks Spanish to help me.
Ruth can translate?
Okay. Thank you.
Buenas noches a todos ustedes aquí presentes.
Good evening, everyone here present.
Mi nombre es Ismael Galvin.
My name is Ismael Galvin.
Ciudadano y residente de esta bonita ciudad, Palmdale.
Resident and citizen of this beautiful city, Palmdale.
Lo cual pues estoy muy a gusto aquí en esta ciudad.
Which I'm very, which I'm very pleased and happy to be here.
Y mirando ciertos cambios que han habido ya en esta ciudad en el tiempo que tengo acá.
And to see a lot of different changes that I see in this city while I've been living here.
Lo más que he mirado en estos últimos años, he mirado mucho, mucha gente que no tiene casas, y en sí, así como dijo el señor Kagan.
But I, sorry, I'm not translating, so I'm gonna shorten. But I've noticed a lot of different changes, a lot of different people that are, that are, don't have homes, and just to piggyback to what Kagan said.
Y pues yo estoy ayudándole a algunas fundaciones.
And I am helping a few organizations.
Lo cual en algunas veces estoy temprano ahí para ayudarles.
Which sometimes I'm there early. Which sometimes I'm there early to help.
En llevarles comida también o provisiones para darles a la gente que está sin casa.
To either take food or any necessary provisions that they need to the individuals that are unhoused.
Lo cual también yo sinceramente le pido a la ciudad que nos ayuden para poder asistir a esta comunidad.
Should she get translated?
Which is why I'm asking the city for the help so that they can go ahead and, and help out.
Para así todos juntos poder salir adelante y poder ayudar a la gente que necesita.
So that everybody can go ahead and get together and move forward and help the people that need the assistance.
Así es que es lo que espero yo de todos ustedes.
And I hope, and that's what I'm waiting from all of you guys.
Para mantener lo más bonito que se pueda aquí todo el Valle del Antílope.
So that we can keep the Antelope Valley beautiful.
Muchísimas gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you very much.
Very good, that's how you do it. City clerk?
Felipe Garcia. Maria Garcia.
And after Maria, who have you got?
Mari Howard.
Okay, just so you know, so you can queue up. Valerie will be after this.
I needed somebody here.
Muchas gracias.
Okay, I, my name is, uh, mi nombre es María García.
Good evening, my name is María García.
Y este, yo soy, uh, la persona que les ha cocinado por muchos años a los indigentes.
And I am the one that has been cooking for many years for the unhoused individuals.
Y yo necesito si ustedes nos pueden hacer el favor, así como la ciudad tiene dinero para poder, porque nosotros somos las que ayudamos sin que nadie nos dé.
So, we are, um, I'm asking if the city will go ahead and help, just like you guys have money to spend, so that we can go ahead and, uh, so you guys can help us continue feeding.
Y nosotros le pedimos de favor que si nos pueden ayudar para hacerlo. Tenemos cuatrocientos cincuenta personas a las que le podemos hacer de cosi, uh, cosi, a las que le cocino.
And I need you guys to help me because sometimes I cook for four hundred and fifty individuals.
Y si ustedes nos ayudan, las personas comen mejor y se también este, se les puede dar a todavía más personas.
And if you guys help us, then we can go ahead and cook for more and give them more food and help a lot more people.
Está bien, nos van a ayudar.
Are you guys gonna go ahead and help us?
A ver, quiero oír, quiero oír.
I'm letting you hear you guys.
So. So, so we can't take action because it's not on the agenda, but.
No puede hacer nada porque no está en la agenda.
Where's some, is somebody from Saves around here or is there, or is Mike from, uh, Mike back there?
Mike is outside.
And, and Ruth, can you explain that, um, we're supposed to only listen right now? We're, we're not being disrespectful, that's. Is there time to talk? Is there time to listen?
So, what we, what we need you to do is, we, we may be able to have a, 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 the ability to help you with the food that you're cooking. So, you need to talk to the staff, uh, Mr. Behens over here and the city manager's back over here. You talk with them. Because that's what we have Saves for is to help this process. So then, I can't go any further, so. And, because it's not on the agenda, but thank you very much. And thank you for what you're doing.
Mari Howard.
And then after Valerie?
Mari and then Marquesha Naren.
Okay, so Valerie and then Marquesha.
My name is Mari. Um, and I'm a resident in Palmdale. Um, I was homeless, um, and I was in a domestic violence relationship. Prior to me getting into the program with Ruth, um, just two weeks ago, my ex got out of jail. He burned, burned down my trailer and I was supposed to be in it. Then Ruth got me into the program in, um, a place, in a safe place until I could get housing. Um, I reached out to Oasis prior to this, nobody helped me. Um, Lawson didn't help me either, they were there one day and witnessed him putting hands on me and didn't do anything about it. Yeah, and like I said, Ruth helped me.
Thank you.
Marquesha Naren.
And after Marquesha is?
Maurice Banks.
Okay, so if you want to queue up, I can kind of help.
Vladimir Gomez, right after.
There you go.
Hi, my name is Marquesha.
Who's that?
This is my son, Malachi. So, um, we've been homeless for a year now, sleeping in the car. Um, we've tried every avenue, Valley Oasis, Two-One-One, whoever they say assists with homeless. We received no help. Um, if it wasn't for Ruth, just as of yesterday, meeting her and her helping us get out of the car, um, excuse me, we would still be in the car right now. I just really feel that, um, homeless people all get put in one category. Like, um, we're, we're homeless because we're drug addicts or we're homeless because we don't want to work, we're lazy. That's not the case because my family had an apartment before the pandemic. My family, we had jobs before the pandemic, you know? Um, we had no control of that happening. Now we need help, now we need assistance, you know? And I feel like as a community, we can all do more to help each other. You know, um, don't just turn a blind eye and just say, well, it's not my problem. You know, some people don't know how it feels because they've never been one paycheck away from being homeless. You know, so, I don't have much to say, but I just say that I'm, I'm tired of going through what I'm going through. And, um, I'm willing to do the footwork to get myself into a better situation, but I don't have much. So, to help me, my child, my fiance, you know, that would be a big help. And once again, I said, if it wasn't for Ruth, you know, getting us out of the car last night, we'd still be there. We've been there for a year. Um, Valley Oasis, they have probably over a million voicemails from me with no return calls, no help, no anything. So, that's all I have to say.
All right, so let's make sure that we get her, let's make sure we have some staff follow up on this. Make sure that you leave your information with them. And also, when you're, when you, when you're looking for the job stuff, America's Job Center on Sierra Highway is a great resource, and they have the ability to take a look at what your skills and abilities are and match them up with stuff that's out there. They always have something, so, you know, he's not going to be, not going to be the CEO tomorrow, but they may have something, okay? So, talk to those guys over there, David and those guys are really good at helping with that. Ruth, you know where they're at over there with himself, okay?
Okay.
And Mayor, um, a lot of people watching don't know what Valley Oasis is. Um, it's a, so, I want to say a domestic violence shelter, women's shelter. Um, it's, it's been there for a very long time, it's never expanded as far as I know. It's woefully, um, small for the population that we have in the Al Valley. So, when people say that they were turned around, turned away from Valley Oasis, it's, it's the one and only shelter uh, for women that we have in the Al Valley. It's, it's time for us to step up and get what we're going for.
I know we're working on some things, but, you know, all this stuff, it doesn't happen overnight, unfortunately, but we should did, so. Okay, uh, city clerk, who was next?
Maurice Banks.
Uh-huh.
Vladimir Gomez and Van Roberts.
Okay, so you want to line up here so you can, we can hop in? Welcome, sir.
Welcome, thank you, thank you, good evening, everyone. My name is Maurice Banks. Um, I moved to California from Missouri, which I actually have been working since I was fourteen years old. I never did drugs a day in my life. I don't have no criminal background. I do not have a speeding ticket. I've been having my driver's license since I was seventeen years old, I'm forty years old now. I applied for Amazon three times. I had three interviews. I have no callback. I applied for the city of Palmdale for street department, maintenance, no callback. That's my wife said, we've been homeless in our car for a year with a four-year-old. Me being a man, it's hard because the first thing people say are deadbeat dads. I'm far away from it. My son means everything to me. And, but one thing that I see is wrong, this is not a lot, it's not a lot of help. When I called Two-One-One for a whole year, every day for a whole year, no callback. Only resorts for Lancaster or the Antelope Valley is Valley Oasis, which from my understanding, I think they're just overwhelmed with people, which meaning we need to get other programs funded that's doing the same thing that they're doing now. If it wasn't for Ruth, like my wife said, I'd still be in my car. You know, with the way the economy is going, with the gas prices going up, it's nowhere in the world I can be inside my car at a hundred degrees running an air with a four-year-old. You know, and I know it's a lot of people that's on the streets that probably don't want anything, but it is something that out there that's due. I've been homeless in Lancaster, no one came out there, I haven't seen anyone with help. I came to Palmdale. If it wasn't for Ruth, I, like I said, I'd still be in that car. And me personally, I just think that Ruth organization should get a little bit more funding to help more people like me that's willing to do something with themselves. You know, I thank y'all for the opportunity to listen to me and please take that in consideration.
Thank you, sir.
Vladimir Gomez.
Vladimir next?
Good evening. We're here again for measure A V. This shouldn't be happening all the time, we come here for, to advocate for measure A V. I'm, I'm asking to be transparent. These organizations, they need their funding. And also, who is, whoever's on the oversight committee needs to be out. They're not being transparent. I don't know who's there and I don't care who's there right now. Those things, there are many things going to be coming out to light. You gotta make sure that organization that you guys belong to, I don't know who, but I know who. You gotta be transparent, give the fair funding to the organizations. Needs to be audited all the time, like the oversight committee, like the organizations too. Every organization deserves their funding. As a stakeholder, as a business owner, as a taxpayer, I'm advocating for all of them. Because I don't want my money to be just given to organizations who have not done anything in the past. Salva, Dolores Huerta, I worked with them for so many years. They have done so many great things, even myself. I will call one of those organizations or any organization, I will drive. Go get food, go give to families here in D A B, give it to you in Palmdale, which I didn't mind, no one paid me, they didn't pay them. But they have the resources that I was able to provide to these families. So, the only thing I'm asking to be transparent and to give a fair funding for every organization. As a taxpayer, as a business owner, we should be transparent from both side. From the oversight, the council and organizations also. Thank you.
Thank you.
Van Roberts?
Hello, Mayor, hello, Council. Um, I'm actually, I'm not, I'm not used to being up in the, up in here, I'm used to being out there. I'm a soldier out there with a lot of youth, a lot of kids, a lot of human trafficking. I've been doing this for eighteen years, but I'm here today just to talk to you, to tell you about what's really going on out there. I am one of the soldiers, as Ruth who was out there underground, out there. I fight the human trafficking with our youth. Uh, uh, as of last year, our organization was able to feed six hundred and thirty-seven thousand families during the pandemic. It's not just only food. It's not just only food, but we do the hygiene, we do everything possible because these are the things that will help our law enforcement and our money to prevent home invasions, to prevent, uh, a lot of things that goes on out there because these people don't have what it takes to survive. So, by helping us, we're also helping our law enforcement. And we're also trying to keep the prison pipeline down. We're also trying to keep our kids at home. But I don't know what we're doing now, but kids are raising parents now because our parents are working three and four jobs. These are things that I want to bring to your attention that may change your mind because this is what's really going on out there. It's a lot of faces out here that I, I have worked with and a lot of people know me out here. I, I like to stay behind the scenes because I don't like the politics. Because if it takes you to decide who gets fed, I got a problem with that. Know what I mean? So, I'm asking you, kinda, before you make a decision, won't you come on out here? Let us show you what's really going on. I'm not knocking any organization, but we're out there from almost eighteen or nineteen hours a day and I have a family. But if I don't do something and if, if I don't shape what's going on for our young kids and I keep allowing this to happen, guys, we got a problem. We got a big problem. And don't think it won't affect you because it will. You know, so if you got a kid that's in ordinary school, it's going to affect your kid. If you live out here, someone may be bringing your house because their kids are hungry. So, I just want you to reconsider. I don't like talking, I like fixing and doing the problem. So, I want to thank you and I want to thank everybody out here who's out there fighting for our kids and our youth and our neighbors. Thank you.
Thank you, nice hat, nice hat, sir.
Tammy Lang, Jason Zink, and Julie Griswell.
Hello, um, my name is Tammy and, um, I'm homeless right now. Me and my, um, daughter, we're both disabled, I have to take care of her. I went through a lot of resources, I've been turned down a lot. I was told because I had a car, I was considered having somewhere to live. No, it's not. Now I can't pay that car note, the income I get, I have to try to keep a roof up in my head and I have went back and forth doing it all. I've been out here a long time and I've just became homeless for the last couple of months and it's hard. Especially being a senior, being disabled, being on mental health medicine, trying to stay focused, not knowing where you're going the next day. It's real hard. And I happened to run into this lady, seeing her help somebody else, Ruth, and she took the time to help me and my daughter. She was able to house me for a week, but what after that? Every resort you go to, when they turn a, a deaf ear and you have nowhere to go? That's the worst feeling in the world, nobody likes to be like this. It's a, it's a feeling you don't ever want to have to go through, especially when you trying. I have worked, I have worked all my life, so to have to go through this right now, some things you can't afford because of how it's gotten high. When you try to get in it somewhere, try to find a place, they won't double and triple. Yeah, you might can pay the rent, but where you going to get all the money to move in? It's hard. But I thank Ruth and Van for helping me get here and I just wish we had more places that didn't turn a deaf ear and would really help us. Because having a car to live in is not a home. And when you really have nowhere to go and they see you sitting on a bus stop or at the park, they judge you, not help you. And I just think we need a lot more help out here instead of everybody turning their backs on us. Everybody don't want to be in that situation, some put theyself in that situation. Me myself, no, I don't. It's even harder to get in a senior place right now because rent is so high. So, I just wish we can get a little more help, that's all I'm asking. And I thank you guys for listening to me.
Thank you. Jason, hold on a second, I'm going to stretch the clock here. What are we getting on, um, the county homeless? We get, what about, uh, where's Ron to go? I think you're on the corner. I think we get like twenty-five cents on the dollar or something like that. So, we're really getting, we're really taking it in the shorts on the county. They have a blue ribbon commission, I testified to those guys, I provided written testimony to them and we're trying to get that, we're trying to get that addressed. The Antelope Valley has been a donor community and we're not getting our share. So, it isn't falling on deaf ears, trust me, and what you're saying is, is making an impression on all of us up here. So, I just want you to know that, but, Jason, go ahead, sir.
First, I want to welcome the new city attorney, but I want you to, uh, tell you that there's public comment on non-agenda items, then there's public comment on consent calendar, then there's public comment on every item on the agenda. Then there's public comment on consent calendar, then there's public comment on every item on the agenda, just to get it straight. I want you to know, to get it straight.
So, here.
Okay, next thing. A hundred seventy thousand people live in this city, we don't have a homeless shelter for women and children, that's pretty sad. We got fifteen million from, uh, A, Measure A V, right? It, it grew to twenty two million, so that means that we have seven million dollars more, give Ruth a, give her a couple hundred thousand. Let's build, let's get, let's build a homeless shelter, what the hell's going on here? The lack of leadership is awful, I attended a Zoom meeting, a state meeting. Where the state wants to give six hundred million dollars out for regional strategy plans, I was the only person from Antelope Valley. Nobody from Palmdale, Lancaster, A V Edge, Drew Mercer, I guess you guys just give them money to hide up in the corner, never, they're at the office. Tom Laki, where's he, Scott Wilk? I don't get it. A citizen attended a meeting where our, our paid people should have been attending it. Hold Drew accountable, gosh damn it, hold Drew Mercer accountable, we're paying him good money, two hundred fifty thousand dollars a year. Doesn't even show up for a Zoom meeting. Fire danger, you guys have done nothing to prevent fires, you talk about fireworks, but I, I see dead trees and bushes all over this city. Why haven't you sent out any notices to clean up people's yards and the city's yards? I was watching Top Gun, perfect opportunity for us to, right, to celebrate aerospace valley, America's, we didn't do nothing. And then I'm watching the movie and, and Tom Cruise goes Mach Ten, right? And they said the fastest man ever, Tom Cruise, the fastest man ever on the movie, and I'm thinking, he wasn't the fastest man ever, Pete Knight was the fastest man ever. We don't even have a monument to him, our mayor, our state assembly, our senator, our American hero, no monument. We need election reform, we need free candidate statements printed in English and Spanish. Why should people have to be, pay, have to come up with two to five thousand dollars for statements? Ideas, that's the most important thing in election is to get ideas, even if you don't win, just the ideas. Term limits, two times, that's it, I want city sponsored debates and candidate interviews on channel twenty seven. And I want them on, uh, on our website, so people can view it at any time, no campaign contributions over a thousand dollars. No money from unions, developers, LLCs or office holders. Austin, Loa, you don't need money from Lancaster, okay, you can't get money from your own business? That means you're not a very good council member.
Thank you.
I want transparency of all donations.
Time, thank you very much, good points.
We got a lot more and I'm gonna speak a lot more.
Julie Griswell. And Stacia Neiman. Julie Griswell.
My name's Julie, I'm recently, uh, uh, citizen of.
Okay, okay, folks, it's hard to hear her, so.
Okay, I'm sorry, I'm recently a citizen of this area and I am homeless now, I'm sixty years old, first time in my life. I've been a hard worker, single mother, I've been executive's wife, I've been bartender, I've been seen, oh, and my husband passed away. I came out here to be with my son because at the time I did, I needed to be with my son, I just lost my daughter and. Lost my husband, so I came out here to visit, I ran out of money, it happens. And sleeping in Walmart parking lot and stuff, it's not good, it's not safe. You know, it's being a woman's not real easy to be there. Well, my son, we go to the desert and it's like camping, I'm like, please, let's stay here, please, few days, and he's like, oh, mom, no. Like, yes, I can't go back to Walmart parking lot and I have any money to go in place else, you know, and. I lost all hope, hope of anything happening and then they came out and they were crying faces and. Giving that talk, it'll be okay and they bring us food and water, I mean, I would go sometimes three or four days without water and food. It's really hard out there and, um, we don't want, none of us want to be out there, you know, and. We, we need this hope, we need, we need to know that there's hope and that we can get out of there and. Now I'm gonna be in a home soon, shortly, and it gives me. That drive to keep going and get right again, you know, and these people are very kind and very much needed. So what you can do to help them, please do, it'd be very good thing for everybody all around, it really would, and thank you for your time.
Thank you.
Ms. Smith, I have, I am on item fourteen point three and fifteen point one, and as long as those are still on the agenda, I believe I'm supposed to speak at them at that time, is that correct?
For the public hearings.
Yes.
Yeah, public hearing is, we're gonna hold those at, that discussion at that time.
Lourdes Everett.
Lourdes.
And Jill Thomas, right after.
I'm speaking on fourteen point three, is that where we are?
Which one are we on, fourteen's a public hearing, so it's a separate testimony on that one.
So.
Yeah, but that comes up, okay, thanks. Who's next?
Lorraine Rowe.
Lorraine? Yes.
It says fifteen point one on both of them.
Thirteen and fourteen items are public hearing and they have their own time slot when we get to those. Uh, at that time, yes, yes ma'am, yeah, consent calendar, item eleven, non-agendized. And anything else on there except the public hearings, so.
They were asking to speak on fifteen point one, which is a new business item, it's not a public hearing.
Sure, so that, yeah, that'd be fine.
So Ms. Lourdes Everett, Lorraine Rowe, Denise Gregg, these are all fifteen point one.
Sure.
And Laverne Harmon.
So if you, if it's a, if fifteen. Fourteen three, she said you also had one in there for fifteen. Because they're public hearing items, they're, they're separate, so everything else, this is what we're doing now, so if you want to talk on fifteen, that's okay. You can come up, yes, so whoever, come on down, come on down. Yes, it's all part of this.
Okay, I did, I did put in a speaker slip to speak on item fifteen point one. But I thought it was semi-related to fourteen point three, so I'm kind of confused as to why I should be doing this now in case fourteen point three doesn't happen. But, um, I am in opposition to fourteen point three and therefore I think fifteen point one. Um, you should not remove and appoint or reappoint all the planning commissioners. Uh, because the proposed urgency ordinance should not be adopted. So when that item comes up, I will speak to that, but I am telling you that fifteen point one should not be happening tonight, thank you.
Thanks. Come on down, nice to see you.
Nice to see you as well.
Yes, well, yeah.
Uh, good evening.
Been a long time. Been a long time.
So, uh, actually now I'm getting a little, but fourteen, I'm here for fourteen point three.
So, so again, fourteen point three will be held a separate item, so it's a, everything on, everything else, but.
Okay, I, I was under the impression that in order for you to get to fifteen point one, you have the fourteen point three.
That's why we announced that we're all, everything else except thirteen and fourteen, now's the time.
Except thirteen and fourteen, now's the time, okay, I, the, the only thing I'm gonna say is this, I oppose fifteen point one. Until we get to the fourteen point.
Hi.
Hello, uh, my name is Victor Ramirez, I'm representing Pueblo Salo. Um, I'm just here because we've been talking to your city staff and, um, we refer them to an ordinance that passed. Back in twenty fifteen, but they were not able to find it, so we were just following up and see what happened with that, if it ever got certified or not. I know many of you council member pushed for that ordinance, so I would like to do you guys a copy.
Single serving ordinance, yeah, yeah, there's some discussion going on on that right now, so you're gonna be hearing something back on that.
Okay, can I give you this, uh, they give it to you guys directly or to your?
Give it, give it to the city clerk there and she'll make sure we get copies of that, thank you. Thank you very much, yep. Hi, name?
Hello, my name is Lorraine Rowe, I've been a, uh, member of the community since nineteen ninety one. I oppose the removal of V Jesse Smith as a planning commissioner. I've known Pastor Smith for twenty three years, he's always been an advocate for people without a voice. He's been a leader and a mentor in our community. It's a sad day, whether it's Palmdale or anywhere else, when you cannot voice an opposition. To a group of people and feel like your job is on the chopping block. We should be trying to create more diversity, inclusion in our community in Palmdale. I'm a community advocate, I belong to, uh, United Healthcare Workers West. And I've worked towards promoting unity, I've been on the National Diversity Council with Kaiser. And I think we need to really, um. Continue, uh, Pastor V Jesse Smith's, uh, position as commissioner, planning commissioner.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Hi, I'm Denise Gregg, I've been a member of Palmdale since, um, twen- nineteen ninety. Um, I'm speaking on fifteen one, I oppose V Jesse Smith's removal. And I approve of his reappointment and I'm tagging off of Lorraine Harmon, everything she said.
Good job.
Good evening, everyone.
Hi, your name?
My, my name is Laverne Harmon.
Hi.
And, uh, I, um, I'm on fifteen point one and I oppose the removal of V Jesse Smith. And I, uh, uh, approve the reappointment of V Jesse Smith. I've been in, in, uh, Palmdale, uh, Lancaster, uh, Antelope Valley. Since nineteen eighty four, when the freeway was empty. Um, and I commuted for like twenty some years, so, uh, and, uh, V Jesse Smith. He's an awesome man, so I think he should be, uh, approved for reappointment, thank you.
Hey, welcome, your name?
Uh, my name is Jill Thomas.
Hi.
And I am a, uh, United States Air Force retired veteran.
Thank you.
And. I know good leaders, I've worked at the Department of Veteran Affairs for over twenty years. I know good veterans, I know good citizens and I know good family members that stick together. But when we have someone like Pastor V Jesse Smith, uh, who's a leader. And I'm, I'm gonna say it like this, I was looking at, uh, we have a Juneteenth program coming up at our, uh, tomorrow, I'm not here for that. But I read this on a T-shirt and it says this, it says, dream like Martin. Lead like Harriet, fight like Malcolm, write like Maya, speak like Frederick. Dare like Shirley, think like Garvey, reclaim like Maxine. Educate like W W E DuBois, challenge like Rosa and spar like Obama and win like Kamala. And the thing with Jesse is he stands with these type of leaders, we don't have a lot of black leaders. He may not agree with everything with everybody, none of us do, and a lot of times when we're of color. People like to, uh, they expect more, no matter how much we give, you want more. And Jesse being, um, the leader as he is, and most people know he's a pastor, he's for the, not just the church, but he's for the community. We need leaders like that, our black men and our black children, and I'm just not saying it because they're black.
Ma'am, ma'am, here, ma'am, here, we're talking to, to these guys.
Correct, but I was, okay, so, and I'm saying.
They're all saying it on TV.
I got you, so I'm saying that I highly oppose the removal of V Jesse Smith. And I do approve that he remains as a planning commission because he's good for us, he's good for Palmdale. He's good for the leaders, he's good for the commission that he's on, and I would like for you to really take into it. And not have individual, uh, uh, biases for whatever it might be, let us be us. Let us agree, let us disagree, but let us agree to disagree, but let him go forward.
Thank you, thank you very much.
Dr. Roger Girian. Marcos Alvarez.
Help the city clerk and print, so.
Good evening, councilman.
Hi, how are you, good to see you.
Good to see you too.
They need you after this meeting.
I, I, I can see why, yeah, I, I'm Dr. Roger Girian and I'm on the medical staff of Antelope Valley Hospital. I'm here to represent the foundation of Antelope Valley Hospital, we put in a request for a grant, A V grant. I'm not, I'm not sure if we got accepted or not, but I wanted to accentuate some of the reasons why we hope for the, for the grant. First of all, I want to say this, uh, you were talking about how. How much we do for homeless or how much we do for different populations and how much money we get back from the county. I have statistics, if you're interested, from the sheriff's department about how many calls for service. That the MET team, the mobile, uh, mental health evaluation team, how many calls they have. And we are the highest call for service in the county. By a minimum of three times even all of you, and all of you is a county hospital. We, we provide service for any gent, for, uh, you name it, we do it. And we don't get the funding for it, I've tried to go down to the county three times to Catherine Barger's office. And plead our case, falls on deaf ears, I, I, I love Catherine Barger, she does a great job, but my problem is. We aren't getting the funds we need and it's, it's dire straits out here. In the emergency room, we see the homeless, we see, uh, vets, we see every, um, settlement of the population. And we can't help everybody because we don't have the resources, so part of what I'm proposing is that. Number one, we start a pub, a, a lot more public education and what I'm asking to do is to. Do video streaming on mental health topics, just, just for the start. Uh, we want to do, uh, just the bread and butter kinds of psychiatric issues that are out there. Depression, ho- homeless issues, um, bipolar problems, anxiety. But we also want to pair it with the sheriff's department to do some public education with them relative to mental illness. Uh, and I've, I've been working with Paul Schaefer, or, or, not Paul Schaefer. But Ron Schaefer for the, for that, Paul Schaefer was with Johnny Carson.
Different Schaefer.
So, I also want to say that we are a district hospital. And as a district hospital, we have to serve, we have to have a psychiatric program and we're overstretched and. Uh, want to use those funds to, to very effectively meet, as, as effectively as possible, meet the needs of the community.
Thanks.
Thank you very much.
So, before you leave, do you have the stats on how, what, what the percentage or the raw figure is? For how many times a MET team doesn't respond or can't be there, because this is why West Hollywood hired their own MET team.
We, we're looking for, actually, we're looking for, uh, I'm talking to the sheriff's department right now, I, I can get you those stats.
Let's do it together.
So, so, so Mayor, maybe we can do a workshop with, with all those stats from, from his organization and from the sheriffs and maybe we can. Figure out a way to, to get some of these programs funded if we do a workshop.
Yep.
I would love to do that, that would be great.
Well, I, I can tell you, look at what West Hollywood did, because they got tired of screwing around with this and they just, they just gobbled up a bunch of.
Already talking about, this is interesting, thank you very much for hearing.
Thank you.
Dr. Girian.
Dr. Girian. He's at, he's at the A V hospital.
AV Hospital.
Foundation?
Yeah.
Foundation, yes, sir.
Yeah. Okay. Just, I don't see it here.
Nope.
Can, can you tell them what your title is with AV Hospital?
Uh, right now, um, well, I'm the medical staff, but I, I'm their community liaison right now.
Right, and, and your focus is on mental health?
On mental health, correct.
Okay.
Yeah.
Thank you so much.
Thanks.
A much greater funding for mental health. And we did receive money from the federal government, and there's a budget that's going to be worked on tonight, and I'm gonna propose that we add two million dollars to that budget out of that fund. So, hopefully, we can work things out.
Thank you very much.
Good evening, council, mayor. I want to take the time to congratulate Mr. Juan Carrillo on his new journey in representing Palmdale, Lancaster, and Victorville. Very well deserved, and will be here and supporting you through the end, brother. You know, I put in a slip for non-agenda in hopes that I can speak of something. But one thing that took over me is, right here in this beautiful city that's growing, and I got a lot of respect for these leaders because something put you there. You dreamt to lead in a position of authority to improve our communities. But what still stands here today in twenty-twenty-two is woman. Homeless woman. Single homeless woman. Regardless of gender, race, or creed, they're still homeless. And we've spoken about this in the past, shelters for these women, regardless if it's drug-related, domestic violence, the fact is, it remains. So, as a city, I'm imploring and asking the leaders of this community to vest, whether it be AV measure or any other general fund, and prioritize. It could be your sister, it could be your mother, it could be a cousin, it could be an aunt. But the fact is, they're here, and they're women. There's not enough sources in this Antelope Valley to address these women, to sit down with them, to lift them, to guide them. So, as one who works for the last thirty years for public social services, we also have, and I'm, and I'm speaking in my own accord, I've helped this population for the last thirty years with temporary homeless assistance. And like two-one-one, they're right. They can only do so much, which is why independent nonprofit organizations extend to their limited, uh, resources. So, I know there's power in this council, and I know there's surplus and general funds that can talk and switch the numbers around and prioritize this population. So, as this city of Palmdale grows in our future, I would hope it's included in your plan to help house this population so we can see less and less in the coming future. Thank you again.
Don't go. Stay there, stay there. So, um, have they, has there been any change at the county? Being that you're there every day, uh, has there been any change in their ability to get GR housing? Because I know for years, we have had zero general relief vendors out here. Have you seen any change in that? Because last I heard from some of the folks who are still over there, that's their belief as well.
Well, again, I will start by responding and saying I'm speaking in my own accord-
Right, but you got some outside knowledge on it.
And general relief, uh, the housing program there has always been a pilot program, and there's a waiting list, a waiting list, and there's a waiting list. So, there's only so much they can do. And again, it goes back to the board of supervisors and what they allot, right?
I just wondered if you have anything new or different that occurred, but I think-
And it's hard, mayor, for us to talk in our professional capacities, um, so we don't want to get ourselves in trouble. But what I can say is that there is no more dangerous place for women and children than to be on the street.
No, I agree. No, good point.
And I just want to close by saying to these women, you're not alone. You're not alone. The community is here to help you and lift you. Thank you.
City clerk?
Grady Colmenares, Eduardo Lopez, and Nancy Rodriguez.
Hi, your name?
Hello. Good evening. My name is Grady Colmenares. I am a resident, business owner, and supporter of Sal organization. I have been a volunteer for more than six years in the community, and have, I have seen the injustice toward that minority community, low income, all races and colors. Mr. Major, four weeks ago, you stated that you have concern about the groups getting a dollar a year leases from the city, since only the black chamber and Hispanic chamber have those leases. I believe those comments to sound bigot and disrespectful to the community that is assisted by the less that are being provided for. For example, giving more than four hundred families food on a weekly basis. As a taxpayer and contributor, we are asking for your support for all nonprofit organizations that make a difference in our community to provide to our people. Besides that, councilman Loa, Loa, you stepped in right before or right after the major saying that the groups that were founded in the budget last year should not compete, should not compete this year for the AV man, mon, money. The DHF and SALVA were the two groups the city council voted to support in the community. All races have people in need. All races have people. Homeless, all races have homeless people. Um, talk to the service provider, and they will tell you that we have a problem. We want to be part of the solution, but comments like that point fingers at the two groups, in this case, the Hispanic minority. So, please, again, what we're asking is, um, uh, your, your support for the nonprofits, you know, and to make this all clear and help them to keep contributing to the community, helping the community. Um, thank you so much.
Good evening, everyone. I'm gonna speak Spanish because I don't speak very well, so.
You said that in English, you did great.
Okay, yeah.
You did great!
Now, now you're in Spanish. So, okay, my name is Eduardo, and I am a gay Latino. And I want to speak about, uh, quiero hablar acerca de las etiquetas, y también quiero hablar acerca de los privilegios.
And I also want to talk about the privileges.
Como latino, me ha tocado ver diferentes panoramas.
As a Latino, I've seen many different paradigms.
Me ha tocado enfrentar diferentes retos, en los cuales he emprendido mi estudio.
And which I've learned much in my education.
Lamentablemente, pasé por una situación de homofobia.
I experienced a situation of homophobic.
Y agresión a mi persona. Y agresión hacia mi persona.
Thank you.
Okay, so. Ahora soy residente en esta hermosa ciudad.
Today, I'm a resident of this beautiful city.
Y he trabajado y he aportado con SALVA.
I have worked and cooperated with SALVA.
Y he visto diferentes procesos y diferentes metas que se han logrado.
And I've seen many different situations and, and programs on how they've come to pass.
Y el día de hoy,
And today,
veo-
I see.
-cómo es que las etiquetas nos diferencian entre las personas.
How these programs are differentiated under the new standards.
Porque podemos ver-
Because we can see-
-cómo es que las organizaciones tanto latinas como afroamericanas-
How is it that organizations that are of Latin descent and African-American-
-no pueden recibir-
Cannot receive-
-el apoyo que nosotros brindamos en las organizaciones.
Support that we ask for these same organizations.
Y eso no lo sabemos cómo, cómo nombrarlo.
So, we don't know how to take that, how to, how to see that.
No sabemos por qué suceden este tipo de cosas, o tal vez simplemente nos hacemos los ciegos.
We don't know how to react to this situation, or you're just turning a blind eye.
Para el día de hoy solamente queremos pedirles que abran los ojos.
So, today, we're asking you, open your eyes.
Y miren quiénes son los que vivimos aquí.
I see who. Who are the people that are living here?
Thank you.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Nancy Rodriguez.
You have forty-seven minutes, and then we have to stop, so, just so you know. Because the internet shuts off, and by law, we have to stop because it's a, well, it's a meeting, that's state, we're not making that up, that's a, a state.
Buenas noches. Mi nombre es Nancy Rodriguez. Should I?
Go ahead.
Uh, yo solo hoy vi esta noche-
Your name?
Nancy Rodriguez.
Okay, folks, let-
So, um, we, we, we can talk about continuing, like, we, we can talk offline about that, so I want to make sure that the information that we're providing to the public is correct, so we can talk about that.
Right. Go ahead.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Nancy Rodriguez.
Good evening, my name is Nancy Rodriguez.
Uh, esta noche yo quiero venir a, como, a testiguar un poco.
Today, I want to come and testify a little.
De cómo las organizaciones ayudan a, con los fondos que ellos reciben.
On how the organizations, uh, assist, uh-
Share the mic a little more there, so that we can all hear that. There you go.
On how the organizations assist us.
Uh, el año pasado, en diciembre, yo perdí en, en mi trabajo porque me enfermé de COVID.
Last year in December, I lost my job because she got contacted with COVID.
Y yo no podía agarrar ningún beneficio.
And she wasn't able to get any benefits.
Y a mí, quien me ayudó fue SALVA.
And her assistance came from the organization SALVA.
Uh, había agarrado recientemente mi trabajo, y como no tenía ni un mes trabajando, no, no agarré ayuda.
Since she was only working one month, she wasn't able to receive assistance.
Entonces, uh, Felix, uh, me ayudó. Bueno, personalmente, él, este, me dijo, aplica, porque habían, ellos recibieron fondos, no sé de dónde, pero ellos recibieron fondos, y, y me ayudaron.
So, uh, SALVA was able to receive funds to be able to give, um, immigration funds, and they were able to assist her with those funds that were given, uh, through the, the county.
So, uh, también ellos me han ayudado económicamente.
They have also helped me economically.
En este momento, y, y también, uh, con comida para mis hijos.
And also, uh, through their food distributions.
Ahorita estoy con ellos estudiando.
Right now, I am, uh, taking some of their courses.
Y también me ayudan, este, para tratar de arreglar mis estatus migratorio.
And I'm also in the process of working on my documentation.
Entonces, yo a ustedes les pido por favor.
So, I'm asking you today to please-
Que los fondos que están dando a estas organizaciones, no solo SALVA, pero las organizaciones, uh, sí sirven, sí ayudan, no solamente a un grupo.
That the funds that they're giving these organizations through the Measure AV not only help one group, but helps several groups and several nonprofit organizations.
Y yo en lo personal doy, a, agradezco a ellos.
And I want to thank them.
Y a ustedes que se toman, uh, el tiempo.
And you guys for taking the time.
De ayudar a estas organizaciones.
To assist these organizations.
Pero no lo hagan con límites.
But don't do them with limits.
Por favor.
Please. Yes.
Oscar Iraheta. Felix Menendez. And Rich Gallego.
They're working on keeping the internet up, so.
Buenas noches, mi nombre es Felix Menendez.
Good evening, my name is Mr. Felix Menendez.
Uh, here's. Estoy acá por la agenda dieciséis punto dos.
I'm here for sixteen-point-one on the agenda.
Y prácticamente estoy en favor de que incrementen el número para que más organizaciones puedan ser parte de estos fondos.
So, I'm basically saying to, uh, on behalf of, uh, speaking for SALVA to give us the maximum allotment to help the community.
Como ya escucharon, son muchas las organizaciones que trabajan para sacar adelante las necesidades que tiene parte de nuestra comunidad.
As you, as you heard earlier, many nonprofits and organizations spoke earlier to help the totality of this community.
Las organizaciones estamos haciendo parte del trabajo que ustedes, que son electos por nuestra comunidad, deberían de enfocarse y poner atención.
So, these organizations are doing the job that we feel this government, this body should be doing instead of us.
Sin embargo, llegan los fondos de la AV measure, y ahora hay muchas limitaciones, y cómo ustedes quieren distribuir esos fondos, exclu, eh, excluyendo ciertas organizaciones que hacemos el trabajo muy duro para sacar adelante parte de proyectos que van beneficiando a una comunidad muy grande en la ciudad de Pandal.
And now that the AV measure fund is here, certain allotments are biased in nature, helping some interest groups and excluding only partial allotment to other interest groups who are actually providing to the community that needs it most.
Como ya escucharon, el número de hombres incrementa cada día. La ciudad de Pandal tiene muchos terrenos vacíos. Hay fondos para poder construir centros de habitaciones para poder ayudar a, a los hombres.
So, the city of Pandal has a lot of empty, uh, unoccupied space where we can help and utilize to create homelessness assistance for the unhoused.
Existen bancos de comida que lastimosamente no dan abasto para poder ayudar a las familias.
There is also food banks, which can be helped, and so they can help continue distribute the food for the people that need it most.
Durante seis años, nosotros hemos realizado diferentes tipos de proyecto en la ciudad de Pandal.
In the last six years, SALVA's organization have done everything they can to help the community at large.
Ochenta y cuatro mil dólares que agarramos el año pasado para proyectos. No es nada a comparación de todo el trabajo que realizamos.
¿Cuánto?
Ochenta y cuatro.
So, SALVA was given, and they thank you for that, over eighty-five thousand, which basically is a, is a pea in a pod to help the bigger picture of the housing community.
Gracias.
Thank you.
Thank you.
My name is Rich Gallego. I'm here to speak on behalf of the Palmdale Freedom Coalition. Those of you who recognize me probably know by now that I don't kiss up to anybody. I have no interest in that. But I want to say, I don't see anybody up here in front of me that I have any reason to believe at all is a racist. And I am so sick of hearing special interest groups who don't have the ability to form a cogent fact and logic-based argument coming up here and using that race card as an excuse for the fact that they're wrong. I also want to say that your race, your skin color, your sexual orientation, your religious background does not entitle you to public monies. I understand there are people with really good hearts trying to do really good things. But I also know that there are organizations who have applied for some of this Measure AV money who are doing things they shouldn't be doing. All you have to do is look on the website of one of these organizations, and you will find in the mission statement that they use some of these funds to help illegal aliens, whom they just referred to as immigrants, fight deportation. I was born and raised in this, this country. My citizenship means something to me. And I sure as hell don't want my hard-earned money going to help the invasion that's coming from south of the border. This is wrong. It is illegal. We are talking about a political organization that is a five-oh-one C-three, who is breaking the rules. The IRS tax code says very clearly that they're not supposed to be political in nature. Yet we have it on good authority that in the past, they've put in literature in their food boxes that they've given out, telling people to not vote for certain candidates. This is a gross violation. Now, earlier in the week, I had a conversation with one of the councilmen here. He knows who I'm speaking about. I asked him to recuse himself from this disbursement process of the Measure AV funds because I think it represents a real bad situation. The optics are terrible. We have good reason to believe that- We have good reason to believe that some of the people from one of these organizations who we've heard from tonight is actually working on his campaign. Again, this doesn't look good. I'm asking again for that individual to recuse himself from the disbursement of these funds. Further, I sent a letter last week explaining the, the several, several of the questions that we have regarding oversight, the criteria that are used, the, the follow-up, is there an accounting that we can see how the, the money was spent by recipient organizations? Is there anything in Measure A V, because I couldn't find it, that outlines what the punitive measures are if someone is found to be in violation of the rules? Until these questions are answered, I want this whole thing tabled. We need to get to the bottom of this, make sure that the disbursement process is above board, is being adhered to by the groups that are applying for this money. So I'm asking once again, Councilman Carrillo, I want you to recuse yourself from the disbursement of these funds. The rest of you, there are too many unanswered questions here. We need to be, have them answered to the full satisfaction of the citizens of Palmdale. My citizenship means something, I want it valued. Thank you.
Thank you.
Shanyan Nash. Shayna Nash. Yul Guevar, Guevargans.
I don't disagree. Yul, why don't you come on down while she's working that out?
Okay. I'm gonna speak from the heart for three minutes, yeah? Ms. Baden-Cord, it's such a great pleasure to see you back and healthy, we were all praying for you.
Thank you, I appreciate praying.
As far as the Measure A V, Measure, uh, Measure A V for, uh, helping out all these different organizations, all we're asking is transparency, if you would please put it on your website and, uh, Channel twenty-seven, and explain it to people like me, who I really don't know where all the money is gonna go to. Uh, that's very important to us. And, uh, also, buying the other measure that I'm, I'm very curious about, buying electricity from City of Lancaster, I want to know how is that's gonna benefit the City of Palmdale citizens? Are we better off to buy it directly from Edison? Or we're gonna benefit actually from City of Lancaster selling it to us? That, I, I would like to have some sort of a pamphlet or reports on it. The last thing I want to tell you from the heart, elections do have consequences. When we put a man in Washington DC who sends buses and airplanes to the border and ship them all in the interior of the United States, while we have people like Ruth here helping homeless people, mothers and children here in our streets, all the billions of dollars that going from, from the border, and now they're giving baby food formula to the border, and nothing here? We have all these homeless people here. And one more thing, if you have any way to get the message to our illustrious Governor Newsom, when he shows up, shows off, and he says, "I have hundred billion dollars extra money, and I want to give every Californian citizen four hundred dollars." And some people applaud that. My, my problem with him is, put that hundred billion dollars back in homeless shelter and drug addicts rehab, 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 mental homes, and why did you shut down all these prison systems and turn all these people out in the streets so we have to deal with them? That's, that's when I say elections have consequences, next time watch out who you're going to vote for. Thank you.
Thank you, they don't have a surplus, they have your money.
Good afternoon, everyone, thank you so much for this amazing opportunity, my name is Karen Davis, and I represent Antelope Valley Toys for Tots. For many families, Christmas morning is the best day of the year, and people get excited and look forward to it. But unfortunately, there are many children, it's just another day of disappointment because they don't have toys, they don't have money, and they don't have what they need. Our des-, our desire is to provide toys for kids in the community. Um, since nineteen forty-seven, Toys for Tots and Marines have been providing toys for children in need, and we want to continue to do that. Just last year, Antelope Valley Toys for Tots raised and passed out over fifty thousand toys. Our volunteers worked tirelessly to do it, none of us are paid staff, but they worked tirelessly. Many of the volunteers are out here, the Marine Corps League is here, they're the ones that set up our warehouse, they're the ones that put the bikes together, our community queens are here, they're the ones that pass out the boxes and help pick it up, and so it's a community effort, and we need your support. We want you to approve us for the funds, because the money that comes to us, every single dime, stays in our community, it's not spent for administration, it's not spent for salaries, it's spent for toys, books, and bikes, and it goes to the children in our community. One of our beautiful queens is here, and she wanted to have something to say, Little Miss Lake Los Angeles.
Hello, my name is Kami Perry, and I was your Little Miss Lake Los Angeles twenty twenty to twenty twenty-one. As a queen, I dedicated over five hundred hours of community service to the Antelope Valley. As many of those hours as I could with Toys for Tots. Toys for Tots reaches thousands of families all throughout the Antelope Valley, and especially Palmdale. That includes my hometown of Lake Los Angeles, where a lot of residents are low income and can't afford things like Christmas gifts. Many of my own friends and their families have been blessed by this organization. When you decide where your funding goes, please remember the joy that Christmas brought you as a child and the impact in the world have on those thousands of families. Pe-, please approve of this grant so we can continue to help families, thank you.
Thank you, thank you, I just want to also tell you before my time goes, we help Save Salvation Army, Children's Center of the A V, Antelope Valley Partners for Health, Boards and Girls Club, Children's Bureau, Tarzana Treatment Center, L.A. County Fire Department, California Highway Patrol, Penny Lane, Coinania, Children's Way Foster, Foster Agency, Tatum's Foster Family Agency, Valley Oasis Domestic Center, Alicia Gonzalez, Seren Foundation, A V, Youth Build, Project Joy, and many, many churches, and many, many more organizations, I just only had eight more seconds to tell you.
Okay, well, I'm gonna give you extra time, because I want all of these young ladies to be introduced that came with you today.
Come on up, babies. Please to let them know your name, baby.
Really important to acknowledge the youth that give their time.
Thank you, thank you.
Hi, I'm Callie Perry, Junior Miss Lake Los Angeles twenty twenty-two.
Hello, I am Rachel Darfler, Miss Lancaster twenty twenty-two.
Hi, I was your, our Little Miss Lake Los Angeles two thousand eighteen.
And Lucy, little teeny tiny one.
What's your baby's name? This is Sadie.
Okay, thank you ladies for coming.
Yes, she helped with Toys for Tots in the warehouse as well.
Very nice, okay.
Karen, thank you for bringing it up.
Thank you, thank you so much, oh, and I just wanted to show you this.
Well, you got your hair in the way there, there you go.
There you go. Sparkle, baby.
Staff Sergeant also, Staff Sergeant is here, the local reserves work, they, they serve our country, and they work in the Toys for Tots warehouse.
Shayna Nash, Carla and Mario presents, and Robert Macias.
Good evening, Council, I'm here tonight to ask Juan Carrillo to recuse himself on the vote for the Measure A V distribution. The last time you convened, Mr. Loa and Mr. Bishop recused themselves because they are part of groups slated to receive money. It doesn't matter how close or far the association is, they understand that being a part of the city's decision as a recipient is a crime. The money that you're, that you've distributed was collected from the residents of Palmdale. The residents voted to increase their own taxes to benefit the, taxes to benefit and ensure security of the community. If part of the money collected is going to charities, the people should also be informed on how the money is spent. Sure, AYSO soccer programs will use it for balls and equipment, Toys for Tots will use it for toys, but they're not asking for three hundred thousand dollars of my tax money. How are you going to assure the community, assure the community that groups like Salva aren't enriching themselves with my money? Do you ask for their tax records? Any legitimate charity group like Toys for Tots and others would be happy to open up their finances if you simply asked. Furthermore, groups outside of Palmdale are asking for our money. Although they have programs in our community, the question raises the alarm, why? Our community has lots of similar programs who do much the same thing, and they realize, and groups out, they, and local groups realize that outside the community groups ask for hundreds of thousands of dollars, while they, who are closer to the community, ask for significantly less. Twenty-six thousand to three hundred thousand. Two groups asked for over two hundred million dollars for projects for themselves. If everyone knew to ask for that much, don't you think more would have applied? Don't the optics alarm you of being minimally connected to these groups, Mr. Carrillo? How have they helped you in your journey to assembly? You say you're a voice for the voiceless, but who do you owe your voice and your direction to? Please recuse yourself.
Buenas tardes, Consejo, estoy aquí pidiendo por la recusación del voto del señor Carrillo para distribuir.
You gotta, do we have somebody can translate, is it going along?
Yeah, I just read it.
You're gonna do, oh, that's what you read, oh, okay, great, okay.
Okay.
That's how bad my Spanish is, so.
Estoy aquí pidiendo por la recusación del voto del señor Juan Carrillo para distribuir el dinero del me, de medio A V. La última vez que ustedes se juntaron, el señor Loa y el señor Bishop removien, se removieron de la decisión parte de los grupos esperando, parte, sorry, removieron de la decisión que ustedes, ah, parte de los grupos esperando dinero. No importa qué tan cerca ni aparte son los señores, saben que un cri, que es un crimen grave ser parte de la decisión. El dinero que está distribuyendo es dinero colectado de los residentes de Palmdale. Los residentes votaron subir los impuestos para mejorar y asegurar la seguridad de la gente. Si una parte del dinero va a ser para grupos caritativos, la gente de Palmdale también quiere saber cómo se gasta, cómo se gasta este dinero. Claro que el grupo de fútbol ISO va a usar el dinero para pelotas o para equipo, pero ellos no están pidiendo trescientos mil dólares de mis impuestos. ¿Cómo vas a asegurar que esto beneficia a la comunidad? El programa de Salva no va a usar mis impuestos para pagarse ellos mismos. Ustedes piden los archivos de los impuestos, todos los grupos caritativos legítimos te los dan con alegría si los piden. Además, grupos fuera de Palmdale están pidiendo por nuestro dinero. Aunque tengan programas en nuestra comunidad, la pregunta que es alarmante es por qué. Nuestra comunidad tiene muchos grupos locales que hacen lo mismo, y realizaron que esos grupos fuera de nuestra ciudad pidieron cienes de miles de dólares, cuando los más conectados a la gente pidieron significar, significativamente menos. Dos grupos pidieron más de los mil, más de dos mil dólares para ellos mismos. Si pudieran, si supieran que pueden pedir tanto, no creen que más aplicaran? ¿No te alarma los ópticos de estar a lo, a lo mínimo conectados a estos grupos, señor Carrillo? ¿Cómo te han ayudado en tu viaje al asemblaje? Dices que eres voz a los mudos, pero a quién debes tu voz y tu dirección? Retírese usted mismo, gracias.
Robert Macias, Melissa Chavez. Alicia Noterman. Actually, there's people ahead of you. Abraham Sosedo. Kelly McTaggart.
Hello, my name's Alicia Noterman, um, I am a local business owner, uh, Dynamic Therapy Solutions for the past twenty-one years in Palmdale. Um, we service, uh, kids with disabilities, learning disabilities, and, um, physical and communication disabilities. Um, I'm here for a couple of reasons, one, I wanted to give you feedback, I'm here for sixteen point two measure on the, uh, grant. Um, I am a recipient of, well, hopefully, I am a recipient of, of the grant. I wanted to give you a little feedback is that, um, I've been writing and asking about the grant, and I didn't know about the grant until today I received a phone call from Eric, a lovely phone call, asking me to, um, speak at the opening, the grand opening of the Marie Curran Courtney, um, Park next week. And I was super excited to be invited to speak at that, and then I said, "Hey, have you heard anything on the grant? Or do you have anything to do with it?" And he said, "Well, you are one of the people who are on the list to possibly get the grant if it's approved." Um, so one, I just wanted to let you guys know the feedback, the communication needs to be better, because, um, we assumed that we didn't have any, you know, response for the grant, but we are super grateful to be considered for the grant, and I wanted to tell you a little bit about the program and why it is super important to get the funds to start that program as soon as possible. Um, our grant submission is to help, uh, kids with learning disabilities, um, who have been affected by the pandemic, and, um, I know everybody has been affected by it, but more importantly, the twenty percent of every classroom. One in every five children have a learning disability, one in every five humans have a learning disability. And so that means twenty percent of this room has a, has struggled with reading and writing. I am one of those people, dyslexic and ADHD, and I serve, um, our company gives out sixty thousand dollars in free services or more every year in either evaluations, therapy, training, parent training. Um, this grant is very important to our community to help those kids who are struggling with reading and writing, and to get them the services that work. I also wanted to let you know that those services are not just within our schools, our schools do not know how to service people with dyslexia. And the twenty percent of our classrooms, it's not the teachers' fault, they're not taught how to teach struggling readers. It is a very, um, multi-sensory approach to teaching people who think and learn differently. And we have to celebrate those people who think and learn differently, like myself, to become a business owner, because the opposite of that is fifty percent of every prisoner.
Thank you.
Thank you.
Good evening, um, my name's Kelly McTaggart, uh, I'm a resident of Palmdale off and on since, oh, gosh, ninety-two. And, uh, my husband actually works for City of Palmdale in traffic lights and signals. And my son has been a recipient of, um, the services that Alicia is talking about. He, um, was really struggled, I, I met Alicia because they have act, her, her, uh, DTS has non-for-profit where they do give out communication devices to, um, people for all different reasons. Um, and so my kids volunteered with that program at the galas, putting on plays where they'll have, um, kids that, that, uh, anyway, they'll, they'll have non-verbal kids and verbal kids working together to put on a play and a show, and that's how I got to know Alicia. From, and so she's known my son essentially since he's been born. Um, so when I picked up on some issues coming out of kindergarten, he was having trouble recognizing his alphabet, in fact, he recognized very few letters. He, uh, mixed, he would get really mixed up on his vowels and sounds. And Alicia, in spending time with him, picked up that he was screening dyslexic, which has later panned out to be true, and he also has dysgraphia. So she, at that time, did offer our family services because it was not covered, we, there is a deficit in services in the schools, they are so. They are so overwhelmed. And I feel so incredibly blessed to have such a great village around me. If it weren't for, I want to keep this brief, I know time is precious right now. But I will say, they offered my son a year of Wilson therapy services. And by the end of first grade, he went from beginning of first grade not being able to recognize most of his alphabets to being at reading level by the end of first grade after spending a year with these young women. So, and at their facility or their business. So when I say this, I could speak to the deficit and help that the kids get in the schools. And the reason why it's come up is because I, you know, I got hit hard as a, as a small business owner coming out of the pandemic. And some of my son's learning curves have resurfaced and at an alarming rate. And the school's really, he's going into Palmdale Aerospace Academy, he got a seat. And I want to give him the, I just want to give him the edge going in because I know how much he struggles. And I know just from personal experience how much he would, he benefits from the programs that Alicia Noterman and Lisa Sandoval offer at DTS. So I'm just here to speak on behalf of that and in favor of their grant. Okay? Thank you.
All right. Hello, everyone, once again. I'm here to speak to regarding the Measure AV.
What's your name, sir?
My name is Abraham. Solicitamos que Juan Carrillo se recuse de este punto de la agenda. Hay personas que ayudan en su campaña para la Asembla Estatal que también forman parte de uno de los grupos que buscan dinero de la medida AV. Los ciudadanos de Palmdale quieren transparencia y a través de este, a través de este proceso. Palmdale ya tiene demandas que ya le están costando mucho dinero para la ciudad. Necesitamos que Juan Carrillo se recuse. Cuando a la gente se le presentó esta medida fue con el propósito de mantener los tiempos de respuestas de emergencia del nueve uno uno. Mantener los parques públicos abiertos, seguros y limpios. Es para servicios de apoyo a los recursos hidricos locales. Es para preparar las calles y los baches. Es para ofrecer programas y actividades para jóvenes en riesgo y apoyar programas de salud mental. Es para hacer frente a la falta de vivienda. Es para apoyar alimentos, vivienda y otros servicios a ciudadanos que necesitan una mano. Es para actualizar las comunicaciones de emergencia y mejorar la preparación para emergencias. Es para apoyar programas comunitarios de vigilancia y prevención del delito. Es para asociar con comunidades religiosas, organizaciones sin fines de lucro y programas deportivos juvenales locales. And I just want to say, you know, I'll finish off.
Can you translate that to English now? We'll give you the, give you the time to do that.
I could. All right, so we are asking Juan Carrillo to recuse himself from this agenda item. There are people helping his campaign for state assembly that are also part of groups seeking Measure AV money. The citizens of Palmdale want to have transparency through this process. Palmdale already has lawsuits that are costing the city a lot of money. We need Juan Carrillo to recuse himself. When the citizens were presented with this measure, it was for the purposes of maintaining nine-one-one emergency response times, keep public parks open, safe and clean. It is for support services for local water resources. It is to repair the streets and potholes. It is to offer programs and activities for at-risk youth and support mental health programs. It is to address homelessness. It is to support food, shelter and other services to citizens who need a helping hand. It is to upgrade emergency communication and improve emergency preparedness. It is to support community-based policing and crime prevention programs. It is to partner with faith communities, nonprofits and local youth sports programs. That's what, that's what everybody was agreeing to. We agreed to, to this. And I just wanted to say, you know, we, we need to be honorable to what we ask the taxpayers to, you know, as far as what we wanted them to pay into. And we just ask you to recuse yourself because we don't want to deal with any other legalities, legality issues moving forward. Thank you.
Melissa Chavez.
All right. Before you start, I want to point out that I neglected to call him out. We have the mayor emeritus of Lancaster, Bishop Henry Hearns is here this evening. I was remiss in not introducing him and, and thank you for being here, so. I'm sorry, go ahead.
Okay, good evening. My name is Melissa Chavez and although I don't serve my culture, I think it's important to state that I'm a Salvadorian. Early last year, I visited the land and wow, the drive that I, that they have to push forward, to move forward against all odds, it's incredible. They don't have the luxury to depend or wait on their own government. They have to fend for themselves. But many have asked for transparency and I agree. Transparency with organizations to determine what measure they use to determine who is deserving of that help or not. I love my family that's in El Salvador. My heart breaks for those that can't come here legally. I would love to host my family in my own home, to cook them a meal and to be able to welcome, welcome them in properly into my home. That does not give, not being able to does not give me the right to call anybody racist because they won't allow my family to come. That's outrageous. In addressing the council this evening, I'd like to specifically address Mr. Carrillo. For, I ask that you would recuse yourself from Measure AV. The fact that there's grumblings and mumblings when that's brought up from the crowd in the back, that should be alarming. As a representative of the people, you have committed to serve the public in favor of your constituents, not to advance yourself politically or mishandle funds by allowing disbursement to organizations that serve in your best interest. It is interesting to note that there are folks that are against the scrutiny of these funds, not respecting the process. What's the problem if they're doing things correctly? Suddenly, the governmental structure shouldn't have a say when just last year you were their heroes? I don't understand that. Moreover, could it be that the refusal of them to receiving funds is an indication that the organization has no right to these funds? May I remind you that to whom much is given, much is tested. I hope you make right and ethical choice and I would like to point the fact that there are people in our very own yard, not backyard, yard, that are needing this help. And so they're trying to use it for those that have come here illegally. I'm Hispanic and my heart hurts to even say these words, but I serve righteousness and I serve justice. Thank you.
Thank you.
Mark Napolitano, Michelle Benitez, and Brenda Avadian.
Welcome, sir.
How you doing? Good, good evening. First and foremost, I'd like to thank you guys for taking a stand in the state. I do believe we're the only city that passed the ordinance banning illegal, or not illegal, but discriminatory testing ordinance fifteen fifty-seven. With that, I see the C-clamp here, I'm really tempted to remove this spit shield. Like, could we get that down? It's kind of annoying and obnoxious, but on item agenda, what's that? You don't need them. You survived COVID, I survived COVID. Did anybody else survive COVID?
Here, my, here.
Just making sure. I survived it twice.
I'm with you, I understand.
So on Agenda sixteen point two. America is a great and wonderful nation, so wonderful that people, people are willing to enter our nation illegally. America was founded on putting Americans first. I have nothing against any humans traveling here to provide a better life and future for themselves and/or their families. There is a process in doing such, however. The Coalition for Humane Immigrants Rights in two thousand and twenty fought to include undocumented immigrants in COVID-nineteen relief at the local, state and federal level. When Governor Grusom Newsom designated a hundred and seventy-five million in COVID relief aid for undocumented immigrants, that same organization is one of twelve to administer the program. I'm just gonna call them Chirla. Chirla's project in Measure AV is two hundred and seventy-three thousand, one hundred and forty-three dollars. They requested a hundred and eighty thousand dollars and our city is willing to honor them ninety thousand dollars of our taxpaying dollars, right? I'm not even sorry. Citizens need to be put first. How are my tax dollars helping our city if it's being given to a group that supports undocumented immigrants? SALVA's project is three hundred and fifty-five thousand dollars and they requested their project to be funded entirely by Measure AV. The city's willing to award them a hundred and seventy-seven thousand, five hundred dollars of yet again our taxpayer dollars. It's astonishing that they're asking for their entire project to be funded. You have other organizations asking for much smaller, like the, the youth, mental, right? Things like that. Local organizations at that, too. You have other organizations asking for much smaller amounts for things like youth mental health and child abuse prevention. Thankfully, their full requests are being met. Not only is America a priority and needs to help our own citizens first before anyone else, let's not be like our horrible nation leaders, giving away eighty billion dollars not to America. Americans are suffering and we need to focus on citizens first. And Palmdale needs to put our citizens first. After all, taxes, not undocumented illegal immigrants.
Okay.
Taxes give the money, I'm almost done.
Quickly.
Back to our citizens or face legal action. These groups and organizations need to be vetted prior to distribution of funds. The city needs to honor its word and make sure the funds are being used, not only in our city.
Okay, help, help us out here. Thanks, thanks.
Michelle Benitez. Brenda Avadian.
Good evening.
Good evening.
Honorable Mayor, Palmdale Council members. I am Brenda Avadian, an eighteen-year volunteer with CERT, Community Emergency Response Team. Two weeks ago, some of you heard from a number of interested parties, including me, regarding the Measure AV and Item sixteen-two. As of this council session, this is almost the third time, it was almost placed on the agenda but tabled April, May. Now, we as a community want to have faith in our city council and we want to see that the council will vote to distribute the allocated Measure AV dollars. While I am not privy to the nuances, I recognize that the city council has a fiduciary responsibility to act. And you have acted decisively and quickly on many issues facing the city. Last meeting, it took only a few minutes for you to approve a million-dollar-plus contract with one provider. We have twenty-nine organizations that are looking at a one-point-three-million-dollar grant. At the same meeting, after hearing everyone speak, I was disappointed when we reached Item sixteen-two on the agenda. Now, I compliment you on quickly moving through all the agenda items, but that there was a conflict, a potential conflict of interest regarding sixteen-two. The bottom line is that time was wasted because we could not vote due to no quorum. Now, these taxpayer funds are helping a number of organizations, including CERT volunteers to help during disasters and emergencies. And we continue to train new personnel to be available in the event. Now, being the optimist I am, I hold faith that my city council will act promptly so organizations can get on with their respective missions. As for me, should a disaster strike, and let's hope not, I, with a fellow CERT member, because we work in at least twos, may be standing outside your door, waiting to help. Thank you in advance, in advance, for approving release of a portion of these Measure AV tax dollars this eve.
Thank you.
Carol Ross, Ruth Sanchez, and Adriana Sosedo.
Good evening, City Council. I'm gonna say it in Spanish and then I'm gonna go ahead and say it in English. Necesitamos transparencia y examinar todos los negocios y financias, sin finanzias de lucruras, lucros, lucros. Y el dinero se tiene que quedar en Palmdale. So what we need is, we need complete transparency. We need every single nonprofit business and business vetted. We need to know exactly where that money is going and that money needs to stay in Palmdale. Measure AV needs to stay in Palmdale only. I am a taxpayer here and so I expect this money to stay in my city. The other concern I have is a lot of talk about the homeless and I have a heart for the homeless, I really do. But my concern is, is are we creating a bigger problem by taking care of the homeless and then having a bigger issue in our hands? Because then we're the ones that are going to be responsible to take care of the issue instead of other cities also helping and taking care of the issue as well. So this is something that is concerning to me. Also, Carrillo, I am going to address you. You do have to recuse yourself from what's happening here because you have been working with organizations to help you with your campaign. And so we need to make sure that everything is completely transparent and we don't want to have any more issues in our city. So I just want to say thank you to everybody for listening and as a taxpayer, I am asking you to please keep Measure AV money here in our city. Thank you very much.
Thank you. Hang on, Ruth, hang on. Okay, it's ten-thirty. By ordinance, I have to have a motion to continue the meeting beyond ten-thirty. Do I have a motion to that effect? So we can take a vote on this? I'll make, I'll make the motion. Do we continue the meeting past ten-thirty? Do I have a second to that item?
I'll second it.
You have a motion and a second to continue the... Well, actually, actually, it is the city council that has to vote on that, so. Do I have a second? Okay, so therein lies the problem. So what we're gonna have to do is be back over here tomorrow and continue this meeting tomorrow. So, so, can we, hang on, hang on, I mean, I'm trying to, trying to get my arms around this, you know? That's why, that's why I said something a little earlier that there's two potential problems. I solved the problem with the internet. So the item dies for lack of a second, so. Does it require it to roll over to tomorrow, correct?
So you have the option to roll it over to tomorrow or to any date, without having to re-agendize or whatever, you can roll it over tomorrow or any date within the next five days. Or if you wish to push it longer, then you would, we'd have to re-agendize.
So how about eight o'clock tomorrow morning?
Some of your council people have jobs.
I'm working my way down the clock, please, you know? Well, the other guys do, too, so.
Mayor Hoffbauer, please don't forget that I have a job.
Yeah, well, all of us, all of us have got, everybody does here, so. In fact, I won't be in town, so you got it. So we'll continue this meeting. That's a motion to continue to five o'clock tomorrow. Do I have a second?
A second.
Okay, all in favor? Aye. City Clerk, please poll the council.
Councilmember Edencourt?
I guess so.
I guess so.
Councilmember Carrillo?
Yes.
Mayor Paul Tenloa?
Yes.
And Mayor Hoffbauer.
Yes.
Thank you.
All right. Okay, see you tomorrow.
Out of my ear, Ruth. Excuse me, excuse me.
I have a question for the city.
One minor item is that I do need...
Call for order.
I do need to... I should have disclosed for the record that the item...
The meeting's adjourned.
Now, excuse me, Mr. Mayor. Sir Mayor, before you adjourn the item, I just want to make clear for the record that the vote from closed session, both items that are reported out were 5 to 0. That is all. Thank you.